I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen this evening, and we will start this evening by inviting Matt Sifflin up, who is on the agenda a little bit later this evening, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Matt. I can see a lot of familiar faces in here this evening. That's Sheriff Matt's last name, so I'm sure many people are excited because we have Matt and a good chunk of the fire department here this evening to swear Matt in as our newest firefighter. And so, I see Chief McCarthy is here this evening. Chief, if you wouldn't mind approaching the podium.
Thank you, thank you for having us again. It's a pleasure always to do this. Matt has completed his year probation. Tonight, we'll be swearing him in as a permanent firefighter in the town of North Andover. Matt actually completed his year on October 31st. But we decided to have it tonight to make sure his parents could be here. They were away a few weeks ago, so tonight, we're going to have the ceremony. A few words about Matt. Some of the words that his lieutenant, Lieutenant Weir described Matt was "a valuable member to the shift, team-oriented, enthusiastic, motivated, polite, professional." Matt was above average at the Massachusetts Fire Academy, and he's been a great addition to the North Andover Fire Department. Matt will be receiving Badge 37 tonight. The history of Badge 37. Firefighter Matt Sifflin has presented Badge 37. He is the fourth firefighter to wear this badge as a member of the North Andover Fire Department. The history of Badge 37. From 1974 to 2004, firefighter Henry B. Judge was the first firefighter to wear Badge 37. He wore Badge 37 until his retirement in 2004, after 30 years of service. From 2004 to 2012, firefighter Graham B. Rowe wore Badge 37. He was the second firefighter to wear Badge until he was promoted to lieutenant in 2012. In 2016, Lieutenant Rowe was promoted to deputy fire chief. From 2012 to 2015, firefighter Jeffrey M. Judge wore Badge 37. He was the third firefighter to wear Badge 37. His father was the first firefighter to wear the badge. He wore the badge until he was promoted to fire lieutenant. So that's the history of Badge 37. We're going to have -- Joyce, are you going to come up first, or we're going to have the badge first?
Yes, Richard.
Okay, Joyce, we'll have you come up.
I have to say that this is also a personal pleasure from our office as his mother Patty Sifflin is. I need to go part of that, so I bid big things from you, Matt. All right, and if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, solemnly promise, and affirm that I will faithfully, honestly, sincerely, and impartially perform all the duties that are incumbent upon me as a firefighter for the town of North Andover, so help me God. Sign the book here. That means all your pain and all your wealth comes to me, okay? Right in there.
I'll just put it sign in the middle, too.
He's only beginning his wealth process.
So, Dad's file up. Brian will be sending the badge on now. Brian might look.
So, I actually had the pleasure of watching Matt grow up. Brian, Sifflin, and myself grew up together. We were friends in high school and still remain friends today. So, I had the pleasure of watching Matt grow up from an infant to where he is today. And, Joyce, you were right when we're expecting big things from him. He is our tallest firefighter. When our ladder truck was down last week, we were comfortable having Matt here. He could just hand things up to the second floor. But we do expect big things out of Matt also. So, it's just another person that's joining the fire department that just makes the place a great place to work and a great department for the community. So, thank you.
Chief, I know normally you have a celebration afterwards. I don't know if you have an announcement that you want to make, or at least just give everybody a thumbs up that if you're here for Matt, it's okay to leave after this. Although, you can stay.
I think most of the room is going to leave.
That's okay.
I know the Sifflins have plans for tonight, so we've worked hard, we're late.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Your great uncle is in the corner.
Let the room clear out.
Surely they're not staying in the fire room. It's important.
Oh, I don't know. I haven't. I only look at like the controversial things. That was actually a much larger crowd. I didn't realize, all of them. I mean, I knew a chunk were here for him. I did not realize that many. Good for him. Okay, so with that, I don't see Lynn. There, I'm seeing Lynn. You were behind that entire crowd, Lynn. So, we have with us Lynn Savage this evening.
I'm glad to see most of the crowd.
Oh, that is true. I did jump right over it. Although, I had changes that were -- that needed to be made. Yeah, so we do have on the -- I was so eager to swear in Matt and the family that I did. I skipped over the minutes. So, we have October 30th, 2017 open session minutes as written before us. I don't know if there were any changes anyone had.
I did have a couple, but they were mainly minor. It was really a couple spelling errors. McHugh is M-C-H-U-G-H. I did know someone with that spelling error. Hillman, there's two Ls in Hillman. Is that -- I think you just had one Hil -- one L. And M-C-H-U-G-H. And Hillman is H-I-L-L. I think that's good enough.
Gould is also G-O-U-L-D. For Tanya Gould, she was another resident that spoke. Since they were residents' names, those were the only changes I saw.
I make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes as stated to the three -- spelling of the three names earlier stated earlier.
Well, she may have a selectman ballot court. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by selectman nobly. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Lori. Now, we'll invite Lynn Savage back on up for a budget status report for FY 2018.
Thank you for having me. We had to record the first quarter of 2018, September 30th, 2017. On the revenue side, the property taxes are at 24.2 percent, which is in line with the same time last year, which was at 24.6. Right on target. Motor vehicle excise collections for the first quarter are running at 13.9 percent, which is up about 1.3 percent, or $91,000 over the same time last year. The larger commitment, as you all know, will come out in February, and the rest of the collections for the motor vehicle excise will start coming in end of February, March, and April throughout the balance of the year. And I'll be able to report back probably by the third quarter what our true collections are going to look like for motor vehicle excise. But I don't see any issues meeting budget on that and actually exceeding budget. Meals tax collections are up 27.7 percent, or $4,579 from the same time last year. If it trends to the same amount each month for the rest of the year, we'll average close to $580,000 for the year, which is a good sign because it's up from last year. People are still -- people are coming to the restaurants in town. They're going out to eat a lot, and it's generating the meals tax, which, you know, I know there had been some concern a long time ago when we implemented this that it would affect the restaurants, but it doesn't seem to be. It seems to increase each year after year. Little, but it is increasing, so that's a good sign.
I spoke with a lot of the restaurants. They seemed to be fine with it. There was concern.
It doesn't -- the revenue doesn't indicate that there's any issues, so that's a good thing. Payment and lieu of taxes, the collections are up 18.6 percent from this time last year. We do have an increase because we've got a new pilot with the solar project, so that is going to generate $86,000 a year over and above what we were getting, which was around $32,000. So, that's why we see the larger increase this year. We only received last year a small portion of that because it wasn't a full year of that pilot. So, this year, we'll get the full collection on that. Ambulance service collections are at 25.1 percent compared to last year, which was 25.3. That's, you know, an up and down. It's hard to predict, but it's running on target, so no issues at that collection rate for that. Inspection fees, which are the building, plumbing, electrical, and so on, those collections are at 57.9 percent, which is down a little bit from last year. It was 68 percent last year through the first quarter. However, the collections are tracking ahead of budget, so I don't see an issue. We did have some large projects last year, so you're going to see that skewed a little bit, but we are following, you know, and tracking budget, so there's no issue with meeting budget on that particular line item. Interest income collections are at 23.5 percent, which is 3.9, almost 4 percent above the same time last year. We have got, you know, a full-time treasurer collector onboard. It's going to be collecting, you know, interest income is up a little bit. We're investing a little bit better, so I think, you know, collections are going to be much better this year than they have been in the last few years. So, that's a good thing. When motor vehicle -- just to give you an overview, when motor vehicle excise, which is our largest local receipt, it's basically over $4 million. When we factor that out of the local receipts, we're tracking at 31.4 percent of budget, which is 6 percent above the same time last year. As far as the revenues go, I see no issues at this point. I know there's some that don't show any collections because those are coming at a certain time of the year, and you'll see that as we progress through the rest of the year. But everything else is running on target, if not above target, on the revenue side, so no issues that I can see right now. Expenses, the departmental budgets are running at 24.3 percent, which is what we expect this time of year. No issues there. We'll see what the winter brings us, and the next time I'm back here to see if we have any, you know, issues with snow and ice, but let's hope not. We all knock on wood. We won't -- it's a bad word. We don't want snow. So, I'm going to move on to the enterprise funds. The water revenue, water enterprise fund revenue collections are at 19.8 percent, with the expenditures running at 18.9, which is typical for the way the business runs in this time of year. Sewer revenues are at 24 percent, with the expenditures running at 23 percent. Basically, it's normal operations, and I see no issues at this time. Stevens Estate collections are at 42 percent. It's up 6 percent compared to the same time last year, with expenditures at 18 percent, which is down 2.5 percent. Again, that's driven by the business, and right now, we're running into the slower season. We won't start seeing any larger increases in revenue or expenditures till probably come in springtime again. So, we'll probably run just normal business between now and then.
Would capital expenditures be in the same category, like a maintenance and?
For, under this budget, for the Stevens Estate? No.
Okay.
No.
So, this excludes any?
This is just their operating budget.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep. So, as it stands right now, I really have no concerns. I know it's only, you know, the first quarter, which is, you know, shouldn't have any major concerns for the first quarter of the year. So, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
You mentioned the solar pilot agreement. What is the other pilot?
It's the North Andover Housing Authority, and that has been, since I've been here, we've collected a pilot from them.
Okay.
Any more questions?
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager, you have an update for us regarding the power outage from two weeks ago?
I appreciate it. I thought it would be a good opportunity, given the impact on the community of the power outage. 1.96 percent of the community was without power. To, first of all, thank the residents who were great. I think they communicated with Town Hall often. They understood some of the difficulties. We certainly understood the difficulties they were going through, and I think the communication was at a level that we can all appreciate. Try to relate as often as possible what was going on with end grid and some of the other circumstances that arose out of having no power. So, first, to recognize that the residents were remarkably tolerant through a difficult circumstance, but also to have the residents understand those folks who, during that event, were really dealing with the situations as they arose. Everything from block streets to working with the grid, and any number of factors to make sure that the community was protected during that difficult time. Those folks sitting in the back row, do you want to stand first so people can -- Jim, Jim, stand for DBW Director. Steve Foster, Facility Director. Graham Rowe, Deputy Fire Chief. Jeff Coco, Emergency Management Director. Bill McCarthy, Fire Chief. Chief Gray? Chief Gray?
Tying his shoes.
It's very good. They won't see your shoes. You can stand. And --
There he was.
And race until -- during those times, people need to understand that there are folks that, when these kinds of events happen, are having regular conversations about ways to address the concerns that are going on in the neighborhoods. They should know that happens on a regular basis. These folks have been doing this. They're all very experienced people. They kick into action without a lot of conversation. They know something's going on. I think the first phone call I received was very early in the morning. They were up and at it and checking out what's going on in the streets and meeting regularly. So, I think the residents should know that they have an extremely experienced and reliable group of professionals that are dealing with that on a regular basis. And not unlike any major weather event or any event, we meet after the event to see if there are things that we can continue to work on to improve. And we had that meeting. I thought it was extremely productive. Learned some things ourselves on ways that we think we can improve. So, the residents should know, and the sports should know, that we continue to try to improve certain things we address, some creative ideas that came out of this particular event. Really, from the pain that these folks and residents suffered was, one, looking into the prospect to see if we can add some kind of, whether that's generator or backup facility to the traffic signals around town, working with the state to see if that's possible. We thought that that was particularly dangerous circumstance throughout the community to have no traffic signals in operation, certainly no streetlights in operation for 72-plus hours, made it very, very difficult for the people traveling through the community. So, some of the folks that are standing will look into that situation. Several others are looking into the possibility of working with the housing authority to power their common room facilities, so that rather than us think about, which I know many of these folks think about literally the entire storm, the well-being of our seniors, can we provide safe spaces on their property so they don't have to travel? Most seniors don't want to travel to some place that we provide. They'd rather stay closer to where they live. So, several of the folks are working on the possibility of adding some backup power supplies closer to where the seniors live. And so, those are some of the ideas that this group is working on, and we thought it was important that the board and the town recognize that these folks are tremendous professionals and working regularly to make sure that they are safe.
Backup generators, probably just to generate, like you said, a community center at some of the housing, you know, some of the ones they -- Jeff, what, $4,000 or $5,000 to have one that would just kick on, like a Generex-type?
Well, Steve is looking into it. That depends.
Well, it depends on the size and how big that you need it.
Right. Where some facilities, you may have one common heating system that takes care of the whole facility. That's the case.
It could be a lot more.
The cost required is going to be greater.
Yeah.
The cost could be greater.
The only reason -- exactly. The only reason I mention it, so many seniors are on oxygen, and that is, you know, I don't have to say it. You all know. All of you deal with the seniors, you know, particularly police and fire. I mean, they lose their oxygen. They're in trouble. So, I think it's a great idea. I think we, like you said, money well spent.
Well, again, these are housing authority properties, so it would not be town money. We're looking at a possibility of, one, making sure the housing authority is supportive, trying to prioritize those facilities, and possibly working with the CPC as part of their housing category to see if this would be an option to fund those kinds of projects. Again, what we're finding is, I think Chief McCarthy of note, was particularly aggressive about making sure that he offered the new fire station as a point to plug people in for medical devices. We did the same here, but folks certainly feel comfortable going to a fire station. But in the long term, having them not travel and being closer to their home was, the consensus opinion of the group was that that would be better long-term play. And so, working with the housing authority to try to find a long-term solution seemed to make sense. So, we'll give you updates as they find more, find out more about that possibility and let you know how it goes.
So, let me ask you this. Obviously, you can only work with what you have, but the source of this problem, it really is the power providers here. What sort of discussions have we had, and collectively, I don't mean just you and North Andover, but really the communities here in Merrimack Valley? You know, we keep getting whacked with this. Our citizenry is affected. And, you know, you say, you know, what's the compensation for that? I understand they run a business, but it seems to me that there's an opportunity here to address with maybe some practical things that would help our community and this region, as well as kind of their standing. Are there any discussions about they putting together a community program to fund generators, to deal with some of these issues because of the hardships they're creating outside of their service levels?
Well, back in 2014, the DPU started a process of requesting the lodging utilities in Massachusetts to look at their inventory, find out where the problems were, and over some period of time, conversations that have continued since then with the DPU to try to find ways to repair circuits, which were largely prone to these kind of events. The complaint of the community, and I think it's a fair one, is it was a substantial wind event, but not something we would have expected. 96 percent of the community to be out and be out for days. And if this is the new standard, that every time there's an event like this, which seemed to happen between ice and wind and snow several times a year, we're talking about people being without power for, you know, three and four days, three or four times a year, and that's businesses and schools and all the rest. So, from our perspective, we believe that National Grid, amongst other utilities, needs to address their infrastructure problem, that it's not enough just to talk about the tree canopies and tree limbs, that it needs to be a broader conversation. We reached out to the administration. Administration coordinated a telephone conference call that included Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, included the head of the DPU, the President of National Grid in that conversation to start talking about the fact that this is not an acceptable new norm. I have reached out to the region's leaders to ask if we can have a regional meeting about the infrastructure and long-term plans. I do know that the DPU, based on a conversation I've had with some members of the press, the statewide press, the DPU is now requiring a report to be filed by National Grid about this storm, something that's unusual, and I think is a recognition of the fact that we're all, you know, we're willing to work with the utility, but we can't accept this as the common practice. So, I think those conversations are happening. We'll continue to try to spur those along, because I think that's important. I think we do really well regionally, quite frankly, in terms of getting the assets we need. With some exceptions, we certainly would recognize we need more effective communications with the Great Lawrence Sanitary District. We think that could have been handled better. And the mayors and managers are attending the next GLSD meeting, foreshadowing another conversation, to make sure that we convey our thoughts and sentiment about how that event was handled. But I think, other than that, regionally, I think there's great communication between the various chiefs and the emergency management directors, DBW directors. It's making sure that the infrastructure of the utilities improved to such a degree that this becomes less common.
Right.
Right? We don't want this to be the new norm.
Has there been any input from the utilities about it? I mean, I know you met with them, or I think you met with them at some point.
Yes. I would say, and I think I've said this publicly, I met with the President of National Grid myself last Friday. They certainly, they listened. I'm not sure that there appears to be an immediate plan. I think we'll find more about that as they file their report with the DPU and see what the plan is, what was the cause of this event, and what do we do to move it forward. I think there'll be an ever-increasing pressure on the utility companies by both the state and the local communities, that we just can't live like this. I mean, if you think about this community, particularly had here, although Andover certainly had similarly, we have people with wells. And as I said to the utility, you don't realize, if you're without a well and without power, you're not just without power, you're without water. And then you have young people, certainly are sensitive to older folks with medical devices, but we get young families, too, and there's a lot of complications associated with that. We were fortunate. We were closed our schools for two days. We were well ahead of the curve. There were schools out for four days. So, it's a wide-ranging impact for all of us, and so, we're going to continue to apply pressure to make sure that the infrastructure of the utilities continue to improve, or at least as a long-term plan, to address the concerns that we have.
Is there a timeline for the National Grid reporting to DPU?
Yeah, I didn't see a specific date. I can reach out to the DPU and find out when that is. So, my hope ultimately would be hold a regional meeting that included the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, representatives of the DPU, representatives of the utilities of the utility, several of the regional leaders, get into a room, invite a lot of people, have a conversation, and stop the, so that the utility here is the broad-based concern, but all the other stakeholders as well, like those people that can affect change, like the head of DPU, can hear the regional concern. Because if you look at the power outage, Merrimack Valley, what we're now referring to, the Lower Merrimack Valley, and this immediate area, was hit worse than every other region in the state, if you look at the blackout map. And this is becoming a common occurrence, and it's not a positive common occurrence.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a final word. I think some of the comments that I've received is that certain parts of the town seem to be hit always, are getting hit more often than other parts, and especially from neighbors who are on different substations than their neighbors. So, they see their neighbor's power come back on, and their power's not on yet. So, those, a lot of the calls that I got were with respect to things like that, and not, you know, not the people that have generators, but actually people who were on different substations on the same street, and so.
I have that in my neighborhood. And that's when your phone was working?
My cell phone was always working.
Oh, yeah, you got that. That was kind of fun for the public, that you come into Town Hall, and you'd see all these people sitting on the floor, leaning against the wall, charging their cell phones. And I'm like, gee, this is different, but it was great. It was good. They came in and got charged up again.
It goes to your really good communication, as far as the senior management here at Town Hall, but especially you, Andrew. I mean, I kept seeing that time and again. Town Hall, but especially you, Andrew. I mean, I kept seeing that time and again, people on Facebook posting about, follow the town manager, he's keeping everybody updated. And so, I appreciate that, because I think that it shows that we didn't take this, you know, as a small issue. And a lot of people did come by and take advantage of that. Heck, we had a public event here on Town Hall that day. The power went off while we had the public event. And there was members of the public here, in fact, doing their homework, studying. It was kind of neat.
Like officials as well?
Yes. So, any more questions for Andrew about that? So...
Thank you.
Thanks to all you guys for all you did. I know it was a sleepless week for all of you, so thank you all.
And you can...
I was going to say, do we want them, do you want to hold them hostage for the whole meeting, or do we have our permission to go? And that is true, actually, and all of you have received commendations on Facebook. I know we keep focusing on social media, but I think it's great to see compliments spill out, because a lot of times you see a lot of negativity, and to see, you know, the positive response for all our departments was really great, so.
Okay.
And otherwise, feel free to enjoy your night, or stay. So, still under communications and announcements, we have a couple of, actually several town events coming up between now and our next meeting. This week actually is full of several events. So, we have, our town is hosting our Community Housing Needs Workshop on Wednesday, November fifteenth, at seven PM at the Senior Center, so it's located right behind Town Hall. I believe this is the MBPC update, if I'm not mistaken, right? The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission's consultant is returning. Is that still on? Yep. To discuss the needs assessment results and the housing goals and strategies for our town. The next night, so Thursday, November sixteenth, the Master Plan Advisory Committee is holding another public session at seven PM at the Stevens Estate. If you weren't able to go, or even if you were able to go to the one that we had on November second, we had about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy people at the high school cafeteria. It was a pretty neat turnout. Wow. And well-managed, so they really knew how to herd cats and that. And so, the feedback was great. And so, there's another opportunity, if anybody missed it, there was another opportunity actually on November eighth, but November sixteenth, again, if you have any desire to attend, it's the Stevens Estate, seven PM. On November twenty-fifth, at noon, we have the Santa Parade. Our festival committee is working hard to execute another great parade on behalf of the town, so if you don't have that in your calendar, get it on. And then the next day, Sunday, November twenty-sixth, we have the tree lighting from four-thirty to six-thirty at the Common, also put on by the festival committee. Any other communications and announcements?
I have a few things. The first one that I'd like to talk about is that we have two of our own young state troopers who, one, received the Medal of Valor, that is Bob Holland. And he, along with other troopers, were involved in a chase coming down from Maine from a thirty-seven-year-old suspect who had been incarcerated before, had been in a lot of trouble with the law, and was being apprehended, and decided he would not go back to prison, and would also be committing other crimes along the way. It was a very intense chase, gunfire from the suspect towards our state troopers. And the, another state trooper from North Andover, Steve Grasso, heard the call and engaged those spikes to stop the car. They got the car stopped. And some of our very brave state troopers, including Bobby Holland, or Bob Holland, got in front of the vehicle and were being shot at and resolved the problem. Unbelievable act of bravery and courage, and so proud of him and of Steve Grasso. And again, they met with the governor last Thursday and other safety officials, and he received the Medal of Honor, which is one of the highest medals you can receive in the state police. So, congratulations to him and his new bride, oh my goodness, I forget, I'm reading her name, Emily. And they're having a new baby. And to Terry and Beth for, they must be very, very proud of their son, and also with Steve Grasso. So, that's the one that I really wanted to bring to everybody's attention. I'd also like to thank a group of really terrific Merrimack College kids and their supervisor, Kathy Valencourt, who did yeoman's work of helping assemble the wreaths for town, along with the North Andover Women's Club. And I'll tell you, we couldn't have done it without them, and that was absolutely terrific. And I'd also like to thank Dan Leonan and the Patriotic Observance Committee. It was a great Veterans Day. You did a fine job as well. It was a real, it was freezing, but it was really, a really great event. And speaking of freezing, one last thing. There's some heating concerns at the Senior Center. Again, I did receive a few phone calls, so I said that I would pass that along to you. But that's it for me for now.
It really was a beautiful Veterans Day parade.
The whole thing was great. They did a great job. And we all met the new VSO, great guy. So, yeah, everything's good.
Anything else under communications and announcements? Hear me none, we can move right on to our public hearing. So, this evening, we are discussing our property tax classification. I know that, I know that we have some special guests in the audience tonight. So, the purpose of this hearing is to receive comments regarding classification and taxation of property according to you. So, this is where we would move forward with opening, so I just want to point a procedure. So, open the public hearing and take public input in advance of Garrett's presentation, or...
I have Garrett making his presentation.
Make his public presentation under public hearing.
Close the public hearing, private vote.
So, then that case, I will move...
Mr. Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing on property tax classification.
Motion made by Selectman Valencourt. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Selectman Smedili. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, hearing none. So, the public hearing is now open, and so we will begin with Mr. Bowles, our town successor.
You all received a copy of the handout as part of a letter from the town manager. And for those of you that have never seen it before and are unfamiliar with the format, I would like to take a moment to explain what it does. Essentially, what this does is walk you through how Proposition Two and a Half works, and how you calculate a tax rate. And I always start with no classification, because that ends up with a, that's the easiest to explain the math. It ends up with a single rate for all taxpayers. So, if you look at the first page, where the, of the page where the tax shift is one, you'll see that what you do is you start out, when you're calculating the levy for the current fiscal year, you take last year's complete levy, back out the debt service, and that becomes the base. The sixty-eight at the top, you'll see the sixty-eight million, seven sixty-nine, four ninety. The state then calculates two and a half percent of that. That's where the two and a half percent. So, they don't, they don't basically allow two and a half percent of the total levy. They take two and a half percent of the base, excluding any excluded debt service, because otherwise you'd be counting something that really wasn't part of the original levy. To that, we add the new growth, which is the total value of all new construction, or in the case of personal property, new property. And we did pretty well this year. The budget called for an estimate of six hundred thousand dollars. This was the year that the Berry Street Forty-B apartment project went on. So, that's why it was so high. That added another twenty million dollars in assessed valuation to the, to the growth. So, I anticipate that next year, unless there's another big project that's ready to be completed, it will, it will drop. But sometimes you get, usually when you have a big project, it takes about two years or so for it to phase in and affect your growth. So, for budget planning purposes, I told Linda, use a, don't use a budget estimate of higher than six hundred and fifty thousand for next year, because we don't know. We collect growth on building permits that are issued all the way up to June. So, right now, we're in November, so we have about eight months of building permit activity that hasn't happened yet. So, it's pretty hard to look in the crystal ball and give a new growth projection for next year based on that. So, anyway, when you add those three components up, it gives you the seventy-one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three. That is your levy limit. Now, now you add back in this year's excluded debt. Now, that, and this is from a form called the DE One Form, and what it is, it's the summation of all of this year's debt service schedules for the various bond issues that are still active. So, it's been pretty, you know, bounced around between one point eight and one point nine million the last few years. It's pretty constant, I think, the way the debt service schedules are set up. But when those bonds are paid off, and if no new bonded debt is assumed, that will disappear. That will come out of your tax rate. That, that's not a permanent increase, even, so unless you undertake further public works projects, eventually that will disappear. And that's about maybe three percent, three and a half percent of your levy. So, that's something to keep in mind.
Just to be clear, that's excluded debt. So, that's...
It's excluded debt.
Osgood Hill, middle school, high school primarily.
Yeah.
None of the school, the Thompson.
Yeah, I have a copy. I can get you a copy of the DE One, if you want to see what it's comprised of. Now, from here on, it's just basically a third-grade division problem. You have what you need to raise, and then what you need to do is add up all the value of your taxable property. And you have two kinds of taxable property, two major classes of taxable property. Class one, which is residential. Now, residential includes not just property that you would consider residential, like single-family homes, condos. It also includes commercial apartment buildings. Anything that people live in under the classification statute has to be subjected to the residential tax rate. So, Royal Crest is a perfect example. They get a residential tax rate, even though they're valued as if they were by the income approach as a commercial enterprise. The rest of the value is the sum total of the commercial, industrial, and personal property, which are all subject to the commercial tax rate. And as you can see, you have four point, almost four point two billion dollars worth of residentially-class property, and you have five hundred and seventy-two million dollars of commercially classified property. So, the ratio between those two, when you go down to where it says the resident, that's at one, at a shift of one, residentially-assessed property represents eighty-seven point nine-three percent of your property tax base, and the SIP portion represents twelve point oh seven. Now, when I first started here, the SIP portion was twenty. And that's what's happening, and that's what's been happening for the last twenty-nine years that I've had to calculate tax rates, is that the residential class is growing as compared to the commercial class and the personal property. Now, we do have a lot of personal property. That's most of the, the biggest contributor to the new growth. If you took Berry Street out, is the commercially assessed personal property. It's not even real estate. So, when you decide to change that shift, let's say you went to the one point three six, what does that mean? Well, it means that you have to think of it as, if you, if you look at the single tax rate, and it's here, it would be fifteen forty-three and fifteen forty-three, and they would both be their, their percentage change from the nonclassified would be a hundred percent. In other words, there wouldn't be any shift. So, when you shift at one point three six, which is what you did last year, what you're doing is you're, if you look at the next page, the one point three six, you see that the percent change from the nonclassified share goes down to point, basically ninety-five percent. Now, what, and because the residential tax base is so much smaller than the, I mean, the commercial is so much smaller than the residential tax base, when you shift the five percent, just under five percent, off of residential, and move it over, the amount of money, levy, over to the commercial, industrial, and personal, it requires a thirty-six percent increase in the tax rate for the commercial property, higher than what they would have had if you had a single rate. Now, bear in mind that North Andover is one of the communities where you can only go up to a hundred and fifty percent. The, that's because of the...
Just a clarification, there are communities that are allowed one seventy-five.
Right. There are, there are some communities, I used to work for one, that got the law changed, so they could go up to a hundred and seventy-five percent. But, but they're only about probably Cambridge, Boston, and Brookline, and maybe Newton can do that, because they've been classifying since the original Prop Two and a Half, and they've always classified at the max. But there's something, if you're really interested, I can get you the LA Seven, which is the minimal residential factor, and it's just a bunch of really, you know, mind-numbing math. But if you're interested in it, I can get you a copy of it. But basically, trust me, you can go up to a hundred and fifty percent. So, you're already starting out fourteen percents from your hard ceiling. And so, if you look on the second page of the handouts, of the, of the two, of the handouts, I compare this year to last year, so you can see how the rates would change and how the values changed in the different classes, and how much the rates would go up relative to one another based on this year's assessed valuation and this year's level of classification. And the funny thing is, people have asked me about this over the years, but if you, whenever you set a new level of classification, that becomes sort of the base. So, you'll find that if, if, if one point three six gives you approximately the same percentage increase in the, in the dollar, if you compare the two-dollar increases in the tax rates, you know, so for instance, if you went to one point three six, I'm not suggesting you do that, but I just say, you could see how the residential rate would go up thirty-nine cents and the commercial fifty-four. Well, that's the closest they're going to get, because, because this, whatever you decide is the base, becomes the new set point mathematically. And then, of course, you can go higher than that if you want. So, I was asked this year, what I normally do when I do this handout, is I take the, the one point, no shift, to let you know what it is at the baseline. And then I put in whatever it is based on the last voted shift. And then I insert this little kind of hard-to-read, but it's spreadsheet, but it does the trick. It gives you every, all fifty shifts, and you can see how much money is taken off the residential class and moved over to the commercial, industrial, and personal property class, all the way up to a shift of a hundred and fifty, and it calculates the rate. And I apologize, it's a little hard to read. I'm even having trouble reading it now. But it's, it's the only way I could get it all in one page and have all the essential information. Now, this year, I was asked to add two more shifts on the larger format. So, I put in, I was asked to put in a what-if at one point three eight and a one, a what-if at one point three nine. They're all, the math, it all works the same way. The only thing that's different is... The only thing that's different is it changes by 1% the amount of shift, and then it recalculates all the tax rates. So, they're all, but they're all laid out the same way. So, this is, these are a little easier to read. And then, in the back, I have the quartile analysis, which Selectman Smidely is much enamored of. So, I, and what this is, is it's a, it's a comparison of last year's rates with this year's rates. And what I did was, I took all of the residentially assessed properties from this year and last year, and divided them into valuation quartiles. And then, I tell you how many of them there are, what the ranges are, and then all of the commercial, industrial, and personal property, and mixed use and chapter land, the values of the commercial portions of mixed use and chapter land, which is farmland. Chapter land has to be assessed according to the commercial rate. And if you're wondering why the median for chapter land is $1,000, it's because most of what's in those 217 parcels are farm, it's farmland. It's very, it's non-market assessment. It's done on a schedule of soil productivity and what kind of plant it is. And the other thing is, I want to point out, you'll notice that the quartiles for the residential properties is roughly 2,350 parcels in each quartile. Well, when you go over to the commercial side, there are only about 600 commercial properties. So, when you take, when you divide those into quartiles, you're going to have much, maybe 1/10th as many individual accounts. So, if you're going, if you can imagine going up and down a spreadsheet, if you take the median of something where there's only 200 in the sample, and you move a little bit, you're going to have a noticeable difference in the median. If you do it on the residential side, you're going to be subjected to the law of large numbers, where you move a little bit, and it, and it's not going to make that much difference in the value. So, don't, so if you're wondering why, from year to year, there's a, there's a drop, a more precipitous drop on the commercial SIP side quartiles than there are in the residential, it's because you don't have to move very far to have a noticeable change. And the other thing is, we did, as part of the interim year adjustment, had to adjust some types of commercial property down, or we wouldn't have gotten certified. Whereas, the residential market increased slightly, probably about 4% to 5%. So, now, I did make some changes, and some submarkets increased even more rapidly, like condominiums.
So, in prior years, you did, you did include that in your report, how different factors would impact those submarkets, the multifamily homeowners and the condominium owners? Because in, perhaps it was two years ago, not last year, peeling back the residential tax rate showed that they were going to bear an incredible burden.
Yeah, I mean, look.
But, this doesn't go into that detail?
No, it doesn't go into that kind of detail. I mean, if you, I mean, I followed the same format I was asked to follow. As far as the, I can tell you, there were some condominiums that, I'm thinking of the one that's on Chikering Road and Water Street. It's right down from McDonald's. That thing really took, Brookside really took off. And I think what you're seeing is, is a lot of turnover in the people that had, and it happened the same thing with Sutton Pond about four or five years ago. The original owners turned over, started turning over, and, and the unit prices started shooting up.
But, it's not just that, I don't think, Garrett. I think also two better management companies came in.
Yeah, yeah.
And started addressing some of the needs of repairs, and people saw.
Well, that was the other thing, because we had sales of properties, some of them I couldn't believe they sold for that much, based on the historical sales.
Yeah.
But, they did.
I'd say a lot of our major condominiums, some of the older ones have really done a lot of work in bringing the standards up.
Right, right.
And it's paid off, I think, in the, in the values, but.
Well, that's what happens. I mean, that's the, that's what I don't think people really understand, about you have an odd valorem property tax system. And since we're under a mandate to review them, values every year, I mean, we have to, we have to meet the state's certification statistics every year. And I can tell you right now that if I didn't adjust the condos, and, let's see, what was it, the, I had to bring the fourth, the two families down and bring the three families up a little bit, and adjust some of the commercial classes, I wouldn't have gotten certified. They wouldn't approve the.
What was it with the commercial classes that were, was off? I mean, you said you had to adjust commercials down.
Well, it's, it's, they don't, I mean, you have, it's a completely different market. You have commercial properties which aren't selling, and, you know, without, nothing against, without, I'm not, I'm not, I don't wish to cast dispersions upon North Andover as a, as a market, but you, you, the, the, the commercial properties that do the best are like the Class A buildings that are closest to the interstate highway. In other words, Andover, and up there, and where the office, campus office parks are, off of River Road and 93. That, that's like the premier.
No, you're right.
Yeah.
It's location, location, and transportation.
It's location, location, escalation. And you have a lot of class, you have Class C. I mean, I've been doing research on income and expenses in this community on the commercial property for almost 20, over 25 years. And the rents in your Class C space on Sutton Street and over in that area haven't changed that much in 20 years, the range.
But partly.
Because that's, that's the way it is. I mean, it just, it's not that it's bad space. It's not, that it's not useful space, and people don't, people rent it, but it's not going to compete with some of these office parks. I mean, I think, and I think what you're going to see is most of the commercial development, this is happening in the town I live in. Most of the, Groton, well, you know, everybody's talking about, why can't we get our commercial tax base up? Well, you want to turn it into act, and people in Groton would, you know, be suicidal if they had to change the zoning that, and we're so far from 495, we only have one main road. That's crazy, you know? So, in that, in that light, you have to, you have to look at the, the demography of your, of your tax base. And in this town, you have five basic commercial neighborhoods. They're geographic. And most of the commercial construction that I've seen built in the last 25 years is the type of commercial construction that is supportive of residential areas, the shopping centers, the drugstores, that sort of thing. I mean, it's, it's the kind of commercial construction that people that live in wonderfully beautiful subdivisions would want to have nearby. It's not building, you know, spec office warehouses and things like that. That was a big thing back in the late 80s and early 90s, but that sort of fell apart during the recession back then.
Couple of things that I just want to point out, and correct me if I don't say this the right way, for the people at home to understand, the rates that you set as to what the value of the properties are, are a year behind.
Right, right.
It's not what's sold last week.
No, no. It's, it's based on the value as of January 1st of 2017 for this upcoming fiscal year.
Right.
And, however, it does require that, because you have to, you fill out this one-page form, but you put, you do the same amount of statistical analysis that you would do during a revale year to fill out a one-page form. You don't have to write all the reports and everything, but you have to make the stats. If you're, if you're, if you're more than 5%, if your median's more than 5% from the largest class, which would be single families, and that's what happened with the condos. They were at 92. And our largest class, I believe, was 97, so it was too far out of whack. So, we had to bring them up a little bit. The.
He's talking about what their, what the valuation is. It's got to be within a certain range, or that's why he gets into trouble with the state.
All the subgroups have to be within, within 5% or less. And the way they've set up the, it's all on Gateway now, which is the state, you know, automated reporting system. And when you fill it in, if you don't, if you don't meet their cut, you know, the big nasty red, you know, things telling you, you didn't pass, start popping up on the screen, and you have to fix them. You can't, you can't submit it unless it's repaired. So, it's, so even though you may not have a mandate to do a full-blown revale and write all the reports and have the onsite person come out and audit you, you still have to pay, you still have to pass the basics mathematical criteria every year. They won't approve the tax rate.
And the other thing that I wanted to mention for, for people at home, the way the commercial industrial is valued is not based upon, in all cases, the worth of the building if it were to sell.
No, you value it on the income stream.
It's based upon income, what's coming in.
Right.
They're not, the evaluation is not the same as your home, and that's why some of us believe that the shift, and some of us don't, believe that the shift is fair, because it kind of levels the playing field at both commercial and residential. We like to go up at approximately the same percentage.
Right.
We did find in years past that the residential was taking a much bigger burden financially. I know you and I don't always agree on this.
No, I, I.
But, it's just to kind of explain, they're not valued exactly the same way.
No, they, they have two different, but that's legitimate, because.
It is legitimate.
Commercial, people buy commercial property as an investment. What is my net return going to be?
Right.
As an income stream. They don't, people buy residential property for a lot of reasons. Some of them are just, they fell in love with it. I'm sure you've seen cases where people.
They want a home.
They want a home.
Place to live.
Some, I mean, it, you know, you'll, you'll see sales of houses where you'll just wonder, my God, why did they pay that much? Well, they fell in love with it. This was home. You know, I mean, there's more emotional attachment to your home than there is for, if I buy this building and I get X amount of cash flow out of it after expenses, is a good investment. You know, it's a lot more.
So, again, that was a good point, though. So, the commercial is valued based on the income stream that comes from the building.
Right. You have to use two approaches. We use cost, which is the default position, market-adjusted cost. But, the main, the, the one that they're billed on is the income stream. We, we analyze and we collect, we send out hundreds of questionnaires every year, and we get a pretty good return, because I have this sort of scary legalese cover letter that threatens them with the $50 fine, which I've never collected. But, most people are pretty good.
$50.
It's private information, but they give us their financials. And once you see the financials, you'll see that, you know, the market here is different. If you, back when I was buying the, like, the, what was it, some of the, I forget the name of it, there were a couple of real estate investment companies that had quarterly reports of income properties, you know, based on the market areas. And I would compare, just to get a ballpark, you know, sort of like, and the, and I would compare those to the, to the I&amp;E questionnaires. I'd send out, when I actually have the rent rolls, or I have the, a sheet which summarizes the rents and, you know, what the expenses are and everything. And the market here is different, and it's all based on location. There are, there are parts of North Andover where you can have a similar-use building, and you'll get, you'll get either a more expensive rent if you're over on the west side of town, 114, over by Merrimack College, or those nice office parks over there. Or, if you're over here, you know, in the, where the Class C commercial space is, they don't command as high of a rent. And that makes sense. That's why you have to, you have to have, well, and that's why you have to have, besides zoning, you have to divide your, even your commercial properties into various economic neighborhoods. And then, you have to use the appropriate rent for that particular space, because it does make a difference.
So, obviously, when Lucent closed, I mean, that, that was a huge hit on that property valuation, right?
Which is where?
When Lucent closed.
Oh, yeah. Well, it, yeah. I mean, it, but it couldn't, yeah. I mean, it was, when I started working here, they had just, I took over for the assessor who had passed away suddenly. And the revale company had put a value on Lucent of $89 million. And they didn't appeal it, even though it went up quite a bit. It was 60. In fiscal 88, it was 60 million. In fiscal 89, it was 89 million. And they didn't file an appeal until you adopted classification. That's when they filed the appeal.
Makes sense.
It's now 13 million.
Yeah.
So, just, because sometimes we have to do this, for some folks who haven't been through this. Garrett's done all of the detailed work he's described, and probably much, much more, to provide you with a classification. Ultimately, the board's job through the hearing process is to adopt a classification, anywhere from 1 to 1, which is 1, to some other number on this chart. It's not setting tax rates. It's not changing the allocation between commercial, meaning it's not changing the values of any commercial property or neighborhood, or any residential property or neighborhood. It's establishing a classification rate, which in turn determines from that vote, exactly the allocation of the levy. So, the tax levy isn't determined tonight. The tax levy's already been determined. For those folks hearing at home, this is not about next year. This is about the current year. Budget was approved last May in 17. The dollars we're raising, the levy associated with that, relate to the current budget, not next year. And the classification determines how the total levy, which is on the sheets you have, is allocated between commercial and industrial. That's what the vote of the board is ultimately.
So, you're still in a public hearing, so if there are not additional questions for Garrett, and of course, there can be, as we go through it, we could open it up to the public, if there's anyone here, and there's at least one.
Could I just say one thing? I, I know how much, Rosemary, you like quartiles.
Well, I just, I try to do, I, I try to do what seems to be fair across the town. And it's difficult, because even just being off, as you described, a little bit can really.
Just so you know, I made.
So, which, which one seems to be in your recommendation?
The two proposed other shifts.
Is this what I'm?
That's, that's, I made a quartile report based on the other.
They're not proposed, they're models. They're models that you did, right? You're not proposing.
No, I'm not proposing.
No, no, okay.
But, it does, if you choose a higher shift.
Yeah.
Does anybody want one of these?
For clarification of what Garrett has identified, is back in 2013, the board of Selectmen, in a conversation at this similar hearing, raised the question about, or had a fairly lengthy discussion about making sure that whatever the relationship is between commercial and, I'll say just commercial, but it's commercial, industrial, and personal property, between commercial and residential remain approximately the same. So, the conversation in fiscal 13 at this similar conversation was, okay, if today commercial, if residential represents 83. whatever percent, and that's $3 million, and commercial represents the difference, approximately 16.7%, we would ask that in the next year, when we come to the same classification, that that relationship remain the same. And therefore, that's what generated this same cover letter in fiscal 14, fiscal 15, fiscal 16, and fiscal 17. It's not a recommendation. It's simply saying, in 13, you folks wanted to at least know what would, what it would take in terms of a factor to make sure the relationship, in essence, $3 million in value, that was shifting from commercial, excuse me, from residential to commercial, that that dollar value remain static. And there are other factors that could affect that. So, in this year, as an example, residential went up faster than commercial. So, the only way to keep that relationship the same, since residential went up faster than commercial, is for the factor to be higher than it was last year. These are non-recommendations. It's simple math, as Garrett would identify, to be consistent with what the board requested I do in fiscal 13.
There's a math question, so you just handed out a factor of 1.39.
Not right.
But, if you look at the first quartile under industrial, somehow, there's no increase despite the amount going up.
The first, the first quartile is still, it contains the chapter land.
So, when, but this is the, so, under the 1.36, that first quartile sees a dollar tax bill, so it's going up by 2.64%.
Right.
At a rate of $20.99.
Right.
However.
The tax rate's going to change. The tax rate's going to change, but the first quartile is made up primarily of unbuildable commercial and industrial land, which these assessments don't really change.
So the, but the assessment's not changing, but if you go up to $21.45.
Well, the tax bill's going to change if, if you change.
But it doesn't change, that's, so if, if you, I don't know if you have a copy of it in front of you, Garrett, if you look under the 1.39 and compare it to the 1.36 sheet that you provided to us.
Right.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if you look at, I don't know if anybody else.
I'm, I'm not, the 1.39 doesn't seem to be correct.
Well, 1.39, it's, it's.
That one. Andrew, do you have one in front of you?
There's a discrepancy in the, in the difference in the tax bill also, of the commercial and industrial, on the, on the difference.
The, the, well, the medians are the same. The, the median is, value is $1,000 in, for fiscal '17. And the tax bill was 2145 because that was the, um...
So does that mean on the 1.36 factor sheet, it actually should show a decrease?
On the, on the 1.36, the, the value was 2045.
For FY7.
The tax rate was 2045 in fiscal '17. The tax rate for fiscal '18 was 2099. The difference in the tax bill.
So I see the error for, for factor 1.39, you would, you had put for tax bill.
All right, well, I may have made a mathematical error, I'm not discounting that. But, but because you have the same median value, there's no difference. If you look at the 1.36, you're, both medians are $1,000. The median between fiscal seven, fiscal '17 was $1,000 and the median for fiscal '18 is $1,000 because what you're doing is you're looking at classified land, which is done off a schedule, which doesn't change. So they would have a median like that. So the only difference is, if you go to the higher tax rate, in the case of the 1.36, the, the tax rate went from $20.45 per thousand to $20.99 per thousand. So the difference was essentially 99 cents rounded up to a dollar or a 2.64% increase. So that's why that. But I think what's confusing is the, in that case, at least in the case of the 1.36, is that the values between, for the two fiscal years, for the median are the same because you're looking at a set of values that didn't change because of what they are.
So Garrett, just, on the 1.39, you have the fiscal year '17 tax bill for commercial and industrial is different than in, on your other models. So I think you just need to, you've got 5.2, 5.1, and on all the other models, you've got 5,006. I think that's what's throwing me off.
All right, well, maybe, okay.
Yeah, the difference in the tax bill is considerable compared to the other models. So it's, that's all.
Okay.
Just so people know.
All right, well, I'll go back and...
But so, so just so I'm clear, if we increase the factor from previous years, so we're shifting more to the commercial.
Right, right. If you, the best way, the best way to look at it is look at that sheet that has all of the tax rate shifts.
Yeah, I just, just theoretically, if we increase the factor and a commercial property value stayed the same, their taxes are going to go up.
They're going to go up.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. If you went from 1.36 to 1.39, the residential tax rate would go from $14.67 down to $14.61. So there'd be a six cent decrease in the residential rate, but the commercial rate would go from $20.99 per thousand to 2145 per thousand. So there'd be a six cent decrease in the residential rate and a 46 cent increase in the commercial rate.
Every 1% increase in factor, 136 to 137, 137 to 138, 138 to 139, has a two cent decrease on every thousand of single-family tax bill. It has a 16 cent increase on every thousand of commercial tax bill.
Yeah.
Commercial tax bills under the proposal of 136 go down this year, year over year.
Right.
Go down by a couple hundred dollars. The residential tax bill staying at 136, I use sort of the median of the median, I come out somewhere in the, around the 480 or 490 range.
Yeah.
The average single-family tax bill under the 136 proposal increases by $318. The average commercial goes down by a couple hundred dollars, I don't have the exact number in front of me, staying at 136 because the residential values went up faster than the commercial values, which has been the way we're trending. And therefore, keeping the same factor means a higher percentage of the tax bill is going to be borne by the residential because the values are increasing residential. So the, the reason for the government or that sort of static approach to '13 is that if you went from 136 to 137, that means your residential tax rate goes down by two cents. Two cents on an average of half a million dollars, 10 bucks. If you went from 137 to 138, it's another $10. You go from 138 to 139, it's another $10. So from 136 to 139, it's $30 on what I'm calling sort of the average of the average, about $495,000 single-family tax bill.
Yeah.
On the commercial side, the effect is more dramatic because as Garrett said, from a weighted average perspective, commercial represents, on a, on a normal sense, 13% of the total. So when you decrease by two cents the residential rate, you increase by 16 cents the commercial rate. But because their value is less, under an approach either 136, 137, 138 or 139, all commercial developers at almost every quartile, except the very first quartile, see a decrease year over year over tax bill. The first quartile, when Garrett references chapter land, he means 61A land. So you have.
Farm land.
Farm land, right? We don't tax those at the same rate as they would normally, as open space or buildable land. So it's very difficult to look at the commercial tax bills at the first quartile because they have little or no value. So they, they sort of skew that average because the first quartile doesn't represent, represents a first quarter of parcel counts, it's one quarter of the total, but in terms of aggregate value, it doesn't represent anywhere near 25% of the value of your commercial property. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of hard when you have the chapter land and you're not really comparing apples to apples as opposed to the residential side because the, the low quartile in residential would be vacant land and condominiums, or the more, the least, the less expensive condominiums. So there, you would actually have dwelling units in there.
So your highest percentage of residential was your first quartile, that's your condos, primarily, right? Mostly condos, very modest homes. And that first quartile saw an increase of nearly 10% in value. Your second quartile saw an increase in the 4%, I think 4.96%. Third quarter trailing a little bit, getting closer to 4%. And your top quartile, in some cases, your large commercial developments slash residential developments, went up by a little under 4%. So the biggest hit, again, we're seeing larger by percentage increase in your more modest value properties, largely that would be condominiums, in this case, just south of 10%. Okay, the average tax bill under the proposal of 136 is about $211 increase then for those first quartile. Again, changing to 139 would decrease those on average by about $30. So the percentage of going from 136 to 139, in terms of the effect on the residential tax bill, is a much higher percentage. It's 30 of 210, right? As opposed to $30 coming off what would be a $500,000 house, which has less of a percentage impact on the tax rate. Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if someone else in the.
Yes, so I noticed there were some folks unmuted away. Of course, this public hearing isn't closed, but if we do want to accept some actual comments from the public, we can, we can give you your exercise tonight, Garrett.
Okay.
But I do know that we have Mr. Carpenter from the Chamber of Commerce, who kindly sent the board a letter prior to tonight's meeting, and it was included in our packet, but I also know that he enjoys coming to the podium. So we did include them in our packet, so anybody who accesses our online agenda will be able to see under this section of the agenda, the letter, it's the last page of this section, but the letter submitted by Mr. Carpenter on behalf of the chamber, so.
Chairman DeColergero, Town Manager Mailer and members of the board, first of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm Will Carpenter, I'm Vice President for the Merrimack Valley Chamber. And we have somewhere around 250 to 275 businesses in North Andover that are members of the Merrimack Valley Regional Chamber. I'm here tonight, as I have been for the past many years, at, at this hearing, probably about 20 years, representing that segment of your community. And we present very simply that we believe the CI classification rate is an addressable cost of doing business. Businesses in the community, whether they're small, midsize or large, face with rather unique challenges. I mean, we all have challenges, but they have to make payroll, they have to pay the utilities, they have to pay their rental mortgage. And in, conversely, perhaps it's a little bit of a double-edged sword because a lot of the people that are living in the town are also employed by the businesses in the town. And we want these jobs to remain viable, we want the people to remain employed, obviously, so that they can have a quality of life here in North Andover as well. So again, we present that due to the challenges, and even some of the unique challenges, as Garrett pointed out, unique to North Andover, that perhaps those in, businesses in Andover don't have, or even in South Lawrence in the industrial projects, because they are right off of I-93. We want the business community in North Andover to remain viable, to employ people. And so if you could please consider not increasing and if at all possible, reducing the tax factor for CI, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, where do we stand in comparison to the other communities? Is that, I didn't see that. I think we've always generally been historically the.
You've been historically very fair.
Yeah, very low.
I think that's the word I would a lot want to use.
Why would you low?
Yeah. I think you've been fair. So anyway, you know why I'm here and obviously we represent the business community and I do thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Well, we pride ourselves in being one of the lowest in our commercial industrial in the area to attract jobs.
Very fair.
I still say low.
And just remember, those companies in North Andover employ a lot of people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Any other comments from the audience? Hearing none, any additional comments for, or questions for Mr. Bowles?
It's a tougher one this year, it's a little more complicated.
Close the hearing and then begin your own deliberations, unless you have questions for anybody who may be here.
And we can still ask questions of Mr. Bowles after we close, or?
I would do that in the hearing.
Okay, so we'll keep it open.
There's a date that we need to have this determined by, by the state, but what is, what is that date? There's been a lot of information consumed tonight. What's, what's the date?
Well, your next meeting's on the 4th and that cuts it tight, I can tell you that.
Just a conversation point.
Mr. Bowles, do you have, do you have, is there a date that we have to have this?
Well, if you, if you vote tonight, you could probably submit the LA 5 tomorrow, which is the recording of the hearing, and get it in there and be reviewed because it's tax rate, it's tax rate season and it's the holiday season and you want to make, they're, they're quicker than they used to be about approving these things, but you want to get in the queue because if you're not in the queue and somebody else gets ahead of you, you wait.
So, so what, is there, so the question was, is there a date that we have to have it and by?
I would try, if possible, to get it in before the end of this month. Now, your next meeting's in December.
Right. The.
Just, just before Garrett answered the question, the delay in submitting the material, which ultimately, you get in a queue.
It's basically an inbox, now an electronic inbox, right?
It's all controlled by the computer.
They go in order and then ultimately they'll approve a tax rate unless they have questions and they kick it back. But let's assume, given the experience of the group, they'll process it. Further down in your queue, the later they approve the tax rate. We can't prepare to send tax bills out until we have approval from the state about what that tax rate's going to be. And typically with our own holiday seizing and trying to prepare bills, the earlier the better.
I'll, I'll give you an example. I submitted early this year my LA 4, which was the valuations, my LA, I did them all right after one another, like on the same day. The LA 4, the LA 15, when I uploaded my sales, it generated what they call the LA 15, which is the SRAIO study report. And I was able to get everything approved within less than two weeks. And I think, but I was, I was early in the process, it was at the beginning of October. You're getting later in the process now and other towns are submitting things and people are getting ready for Christmas, so you might, granted, you have had tax rates approved as late as the 14th of December, but if possible, I've already turned in the billing file for the collector to, you know, import into her billing program. I think if you could get your tax rate approved by the first week of December, that would be great for purposes of, well, she needs to know the rate before she can print the bills.
Right.
You know.
Okay.
I do have, let's see, where is that?
I think the suggestion.
So, I think tonight is the night that we should, you plan on doing it.
You've certainly been able to do it tonight, and if, if you don't, for some reason, if you, you so closed the hearing, for some reason you didn't vote, I'd suggest you call a meeting before the 4th. I would not wait till the 4th. Because by then you could be two to three weeks in a queue and if something sort of goes awry, and a little great pain in the tax billing world, which residents probably would be happy to hear. If you don't meet the January 1st deadline, we're actually unable to bill you under the law. We have to wait till April, which does a wonderful job on our cash flow. So the law is very specific. If we don't issue bills by January 1, we can't, doesn't mean you can't, don't pay them, it just means the April bill is a double bill.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Bowles?
I do want to say that whichever factor you choose, I fed all three versions into the LA 5 on Gateway to come up with a calculated shift. The thing you're actually going to have to vote, so, once you decide, I can tell you what the magic number is.
I think we have those, so when you get to that point of deciding, we'll tell you, we'll provide whoever wants to make the motion, the actual percentage of the shift so you can incorporate that into the motion.
Mr. Chair, our motion to close the hearing on tax, oh, I'm sorry. Really, do you have, you have something else you want to say before we close?
No, it's just actually, it's, it's part of it, but it isn't, and Garrett won't like what I have to say, but I think he'll know what I'm going to say. When you do get your tax bill and you're feeling as though it is not appropriate, that you weren't assessed properly, you have a very narrow window to file for an abatement. And what date is that again, Garrett?
It's February 1st.
February 1st, so if you have a problem and you let February 1st go by, you are kind of stuck with it. That's the only thing I like to warn people.
That's fine, I, I hope the British people are constitutional rights.
I, I have no doubt that you do, because, that you do not, you're.
No, but the one thing, I want to make sure they get it on time, and if they can't file it on time, make sure it has a U.S. postmark. Mail it to get a postmark.
Thank you.
Then it'll be here.
Thank you.
Okay, then, Mr. Chair, at this point, I would like to motion to close the hearing on tax classifications.
Motion made by Selectman Valen, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, anybody Selectman Nobily, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the hearing is closed. So now there's a discussion about which factor we'd like to pursue. I have to say, one of the, every year I feel like we look at that first quartile for homeowners, which in this case, I would ask our Realtor. That seems to be probably mostly condominiums, if not all condominiums. I don't know many homes that are selling for that range.
Less than 283.
Less than 283 right now? And so it's always disappointing to see the.
It's also a big residential.
So it's always disappointing to see the, the dramatic jump every year, regardless of the factor with that tax. So 1.36 would lead to a 9.52% increase for that tax group. And even the more ambitious or more, I guess, aggressive 1.39 still leads to an 8.92% increase for really a segment of the population that, I mean, those are either seniors or folks looking to buy into our community, young homeowners, et cetera. So, just an observation, I remember one year that we ended up having that go up by over 13%. So, something that I always pay attention to. 13 percent. So something that I always pay attention to. Don't know if anybody else has any thoughts.
So slightly, slightly different perspective. Any factor between 1.36 and 1.39 results in a decrease in commercial tax bill year over year, in every quartile but the first quartile, which largely represents the 61A land. In every quartile after the first quartile, a 1.36 to 1.39 factor results in a decrease year over year in the average tax bill of commercial property.
So what you're saying is that basically?
I think Will will get his wish. We're likely to see a decrease in commercial tax.
So really, what that means is that the choice and look at the shift is how much the decrease will be for commercial, and that will impact the size of the increase for residential. So it's really how much cut one gets relative to the other, when you play it out directly. That's really the way.
I mean, I played with these numbers, and even if we go up to 1.41, commercial still gets a decrease, and residential still goes up.
Meanwhile, values, I'm just going to look at home values increased by 4% to 5% is not a nominal number. As you know, 4% to 5% year over year is pretty significant. Look at the rate of inflation, it's running about 2%. You know, how to put it all together.
Yeah, and just to, there is no shift that we can legally put on that would cause a decrease of property for residential to be flat. It's always, it's going to go up no matter what. I mean, based on the, based on this levy and these tax values, there isn't a shift that we could imply or impose that would change that, or we could reduce it, but.
I will tell you what people often say to me, though, that it's sort of a good news, bad news. The good news is, your property value's going up. The bad news, so are your taxes, and you're not moving. And so it's kind of, it's difficult.
I guess I always look at that and say, but the calculation there is, would you rather have your value go up? You know, relatively speaking, the trade-off is you get much more with your value going up than the tax increase comparatively, the actual amount of accumulated value. In other words, would you be willing to say, I'll hold my, I'll hold your tax bill, no change, but I'll take your equity difference?
No, no, I understand that, and that's not what I was saying. I was just saying that those who are not moving, they hope to stay in their home a very long time. It's difficult. This is Sophie's Choice, and we go through this every year. As I see former selectmen in the audience, I could see them in, well, Mr. Stewart, he just left. This is a tough one every year.
So you said that you think that we're more than fair compared to other towns. Do we have data as to what the shift is for other towns?
It's not so much the shift, it's the tax rate.
The tax rate, okay.
I think that the benchmark is better to be viewed as average single-family tax bill than the shift. I've worked in places that have a 175 shift, and it just depends upon, you know, if you have a huge commercial number, then it adds a factor in here. To me, focusing on the average single tax bill, both residential and commercial, is a better comparison.
Right.
And we stack up about where you'd expect us to be.
Yeah, I did look at that, yeah.
People do look at the tax rate, though, and they read too much into it. As the town manager said, don't look at the tax rate as much as you should be looking at what your bill goes up. It's such a complicated process.
Attending councilor, I live in a town with a residential where it's 1885, and it's going up.
You live in a very nice town.
But it's, but it's 96 percent residential property.
It is. It absolutely is.
And about 40 percent of the land is exempt or in land management. So we don't have the tax base in expecting to have.
Yeah, but you've got one really great restaurant there.
Yeah, I'll do a little.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to moving away from what has historically been a 1.36 factor, because I don't think that we leave our businesses in a tough bind by still offering a tax rate that leads to a tax decrease for them, while still respecting the fact that residences across the border are getting an increase. But it's just really tough to look at that entry-level market, that first quartile, and seeing that, I mean, frankly, even with a 1.39, it's still just, it's only a modest change over the 1.36. But especially when you think of the historical increases for that group, and you consider that, you know, one of the big things we heard most recently at our master plan forum was just the obstacles that exist for seniors who are empty nesters to stay in this community, the obstacles that exist for people with more modest means to stay in this community, and the obstacles that exist for young people who grew up here who want to stay in this community. And typically, that's the price point where they're trying to enter. And everything's relative, but if you're, if you're trying to stay here, and you purchase a $168,000 condo, I mean, yes, the market's going up, and you end up being the beneficiary of that, but it's not like you can move anytime soon to a single family. And to see these dramatic spikes as a percentage every year, I think it's demoralizing for that group. I would love to see what the impact would be for multifamilies, because I can say that it was multifamily homeowners that contacted me, not single-family homeowners, but multifamily homeowners that.
Well, the two-family homeowners are going to be happy, because they had a back off, and then they had a huge inflation spike during the last rebuild.
I think they would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard from some of those people.
They were, I mean, they had a, they were below 90 percent in their stats. They were another unfortunate group that took off, because a lot of people were buying them and converting to condominiums.
Yeah, they're making a lot more money.
That's settled down. At the same time.
There's a lot of agenda right up here.
I had a back off on the three-family homes, which you only have 56 of them. And this year, I had to tweak them up a little bit, because they were getting too much. They were right on the 90 percent, and they were outside of that 5 percent tolerance threshold. So they're not going to be happy, but I think the 440 two-family homeowners are going to be more happy. It's just, it's just funny how the market flipped. That's why you really have to look at it every year, analyze it every year. And it's, as long as you have a taxation system that's based on the value of what's becoming a scarce commodity, that they're not baking a lot of because of the difficulty it is to get, if there isn't that much land left that's buildable, and you have a lot of land use controls, people are going to build it up. You know, that first quartile, yes, that seems like a lot. When you think about, if you look at the top of the second quartile, that's the median, and your median's up around $500,000. So somebody paying $200,000 for a condo, that's not a lot of money. Most people in this community that buy, have, who want to sell their family home, most of their lots are.
But that's exactly the point, though, is that for people who want to stay in this community, that's still a lot of money, a half million dollars, and for people.
I know. I mean, I don't tell, I have, I have four generations of my family that lived in Rockland, and there's some of them that couldn't afford to live there if their father hadn't given them a lot. Because a lot of people that I grew up with, they couldn't afford to live there. And that's just the way it is. It gentrified.
So how do we want to proceed? Do we want to, like, stake in the ground and debate it, or how?
Probably, I think that's a good idea.
That's usually, somebody makes a motion to pick one of them.
Okay, debate that.
I have a new one.
I will certainly entertain a motion.
Given the, you know, we have held on the last two years at 1.36, and given the valuation changes, and the way that, you know, commercial is going down based on the rates that we've been discussing, I would make a motion that we increase the shift to 1.38 for the next fiscal year.
Motion made by Selectman Valencourt. Do I hear a second?
I'll certainly second it for the sake of discussion. I'm not sure I'm there yet, but I think, I think that was, I think that seems reasonable, but I just want to look at it again. So yes, I will second that.
Seconded by Selectman Spadili. Let's open the floor to discussion.
So my thought pattern, as I said earlier, was that, you know, we were trying to keep the residential rate as low as possible, but also keep the, you know, but being fair again to the commercial. And we've kept it at 1.36 for the last couple of years, and we've seen a reduction in the commercial valuation, which has caused to a reduction in the, in the overall taxes for commercial. So by increasing it by, to 1.38, I think it creates an equitable shift into, that's my thinking, meaning to, I mean, again, you know, 1.38, 1.39 is not a dramatic change there, so I'm married to 1.38. I believe it's a fair increase over the, from one year to the other.
When I'm thinking about this, I think the most important factor, I guess, that I'm considering is, no pun intended, is consistency. Having spent a lot of time working in the capital markets, that is, I think, what businesses and what individuals want. I mean, you're setting your budget, you want some, you expect some increase, but you expect it to be a consistent, you know, level of increase each time. And I think businesses as well in North Andover have a general expectation around what their taxes are going to be. I probably would have said 1.39 instead of 1.38, because of, I think that's closer to being consistent. That's really my only logic. I agree with your logic of trying to be equitable. I think we should go up from 1.36 for that reason.
That's an interesting point, just having a consistent raise. It's the best that you can, or ship down or whatever, or not ship, that's not the word, but you know what I mean. Interesting. We usually don't say that as much.
I think Selectman King picks up on a good point, and it's really to what you said, Selectman De Colgiero, which is that the closer we are to 38 or 39, the less the impact is on the folks that are most impacted by this change. And so, and again, there's a benefit, there's a relative benefit gain, no matter which one of those we look at comparatively for the commercial side, again, in terms of how they're looking at their budget. So I would have been inclined to think 38 or 39 myself.
So we're in the ballpark. I mean, we can.
No, I think that Selectman King earlier made a point that, you know, we could even go well beyond the 3, 39, and still give our businesses a tax cut while, or I should say, a realized tax cut, while still lessening the load for, or reducing the load that our residents have to shoulder. I mean, I think we have 1.39 in front of us, although, like I said, I think that.
1.38?
Well, but we also have 1.39 in front of us when it comes to what the increase is. And so regardless, I think that we're, you know, we're looking at giving our businesses, like I said, that these numbers aren't making sense on the 1.39, but for 1.38, we're still looking at giving certain quartiles of our business community. I mean, for instance, our second quartile's looking at an 18 percent reduction in taxes, while the fourth quartile is looking at even still a 1.81 reduction in taxes. So I mean, it's just, it puts it into, it puts it into a perspective, I think. And then there's the third quartile at 14.51. So over 14 percent tax cut for the third quartile, almost 19 percent tax cut for the second quartile. I mean, I think that, you know, when it comes to a split factor, just, the numbers are arbitrary at that point, and it's what's motivating you when you split the factor, and what's the factor that you're pursuing. For me, it's, it goes back to, you know, making sure there's a little bit more consistency and predictability. And I don't think that when people think of consistency, they're thinking of the factor. I think they're thinking of what their tax bill ultimately ends up looking like.
Exactly. It's the number.
So I, I would be inclined to vote no on 1.38 and entertain an increased factor.
To what?
That's 39.
To 39?
I would go to 1.39.
They're getting tired. I'll see.
Sorry, we're playing with this bridge.
I see that, yeah. What happens, because, again, what we have before us, this is not the same.
In the past, we've talked about splitting it.
Is.
It really doesn't.
Are we still?
It really doesn't make a difference if it's 1.38.
Are we just, discussing or ready to take a vote?
Sorry, I just want to check something.
Again, just in terms of big figures, right? Well, 1.38 to 1.39 is $10 from the median for the residential, down, and, did we say 16 for one, on the commercial, right? So $10 down on the residential between 38 and 39. I'm not dismissing, I'm just putting.
No, I mean, and as Selectman King pointed out, we could even go several points higher and still give people on the business side a tax cut, or at least a realized reduction.
I would entertain a friendly amendment to my motion to go to 1.39.
So moved on your friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, motion for 1.39 made by Selectman Valencourt, seconded by Selectman Spadili. And our town manager did make a point that the actual motion that will put this vote into effect is not actually a motion on the factor, but on the percentage breakdown. So we have a friendly amendment to 1.39. Do we have further discussion?
Okay, so when we say that, we're talking about the levy share with classifications?
So I would say that I think the motion, the motion is on the floor, so we could make the motion and then have the formalized motion be one that reflects the percentage. So Selectman Valencourt, it would be this highlighted number right here. So the motion, the final motion, if we settled on 1.39, would read.
We have it, Garrett.
Do you have a?
Yep. Look, you can make sure they're correct, but I'm pretty sure they have it. I think he has it right there.
Yeah.
The .94.
Okay, so make a motion, the Board of Selectmen adopt the residential factor of 1.39 for the purpose of classifying FY 2018 North Andover property tax rates for a estimate, so what is, what is 94?
It's the 9.
Oh, so that's the actual factor. I'm sorry, I'm making a mistake. Move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the residential factor of 94.646 for the purpose of classifying the FY 2018 North Andover property taxes, which is a 1.39 shift.
So do we need to, prior to entertaining that motion, there was an existing motion on the floor for 1.39. Do we have to?
No, that's, that's my amended motion. That's my formal motion.
Yes, okay, okay. Motion made by Selectman Valencourt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Nobily. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Now, that's a vote on the amendment, but then we have to vote on the final one, correct? Or did we entertain a friendly amendment?
No, that was a motion. That was my formal motion. The first motion, I didn't put it in the correct format. My, I motioned based on the shift, not on the factor. I should have motioned on the factor, so my first motion was flawed.
Legally fine, that's, because I know that we're very deliberate about the language.
My first motion was flawed, and the second one was. We don't want to fluff.
So, tax factor is set.
Wow. You guys all hung in for that, huh? Congratulations.
Okay. So, thank you, Garrett and Lynn.
Thank you, guys.
See you next year, Garrett.
So last week, we had the opportunity to meet at Town Hall with Secretary Jay Ash. He was presenting a $1.7 million grant, MassWorks grant. However, there is an additional sum associated with that from Princeton Properties, and so we have in the agenda this evening a proposed donation. Princeton Properties, a developer for Jeddah Farms parcel, is donating to the town the soft costs, which include engineering and design associated with the MassWorks grant.
Mr. Chairman, Andrew Chabon is here from Princeton Properties.
Mr. Chairman, Andrew Chabon is here from Princeton Properties.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Manager, for the record, Andrew Chabon with Princeton Properties. Here also this evening representing Bob Bowle and Lillian Montalto as managers of Forjeta Development, the commercial portion of that. As you correctly pointed out, there was a ceremony here representing the Commonwealth's commitment to expand Osgood Street in a manner that will be certainly helpful to us, but probably more importantly, helpful to the town. We're here to offer formally the donation for payment of the soft costs that go along with that Mass Works grant. The Mass Works grant will cover the hard costs only, and Princeton and Forjeta, in their respective percentages for the 14 acres, respectfully and gladly offer to the town the ability for us to cover the soft costs, so the town will not see any bill for that.
So the entire project cost is estimated, to date, by the way, Mr. Chabon has been a fantastic community partner. His organization has been the same. These conversations about this property have been going on for some time, at the benefit of Mr. Chabon. I think at the first kickoff meeting, it was a while ago.
It's been in the planning stages for somewhere between 18 and 24 months, Mr. Manager.
And so as a result of that, they've done some of the initial engineering work that was part of the application package. Total project cost is $3 million of infrastructure improvements around this development that are laying sidewalks going up and down. Osgood from Orchard Boy all the way up to the Barker Farm Stand and on the other side of the street as well. It's a great opportunity to make sure that we have enhanced pedestrian improvements, but also link and create sidewalk linkages between some of our neighborhoods in the community. Total project cost is $3 million. The Commonwealth has committed $2.7 million. The estimated soft costs that Mr. Chabon is here offering slash donating to the community is $300,000, very, very significant. It, I think, symbolizes their, their community partnership around this project. We're very excited about what's going to happen there. And so I certainly recommend that you accept this kind and generous donation associated with the soft costs.
That is a very generous donation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We are very happy to do it. The town has been a wonderful partner since we proposed this. Selectmen, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, everyone has given us, I would consider, a thorough but fair review. And until all of those boards had weighed in and the project solidified, the administration was, was helpful, but certainly cautious. And once the town had spoken, it sort of opened the door for the manager and I to be able to come up with this, this partnership. And I can't, we work in an awful lot of towns, and I can, I can say to you here tonight that I have rarely come across an administration, a planning board chair, a conservation chair, who have been as fair and open-minded as this process. Difficult process, difficult, complicated piece of land, but one that I think will benefit the town greatly when it's finished.
That's great. So just a question before we go on the motion. What is the timeline? Coincidentally, I've been asked a couple of times this weekend about the project and what the timeline is for the project. So I'm wondering, I'm not going to hold you to anything, I'm just wondering what a rough timeline is for the, for the project.
Absolutely. By being on tape, I guess I can save Andrew McDevitt and the rest of the neighbors from another, from a phone call. And Andrew's been terrific, by the way, in sort of coordinating information. At this point, we expect to break ground when the weather allows, so April, May of 2018. I can only speak for the residential portion of this, but I can tell you that the, all of the infrastructure, et cetera, for the entire project will go in at once. And that was a condition that the Planning Board put together, and I think wisely so.
So that's just for residential, but you don't have a timeline on the commercial?
I can't speak for the, the commercial developers not here tonight. So we're, we're actually purchasing 10 of the 14 acres to the rear of the property, and I can only certainly commit to, to what it is we're doing. But we have our debt and equity in place, and frankly, I think we would have moved even quicker, but given the fact that the Mass Works grant was there, I don't think the community or, or the developer team would want to look that gift towards us in the mouth. So it was easier to start in the spring and, and start with, with the wind at our back with this wonderful grant.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, our motion that we accept the donation from Princeton Properties to cover the soft costs for the project on, well, I guess, some of the costs, soft costs for the Mass Works grant project.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Keen. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is one that actually I decided to put on after reading the Eagle Tribune and the back and forth between some of our neighbors south of us, or south, I should say, downriver, following the spillage from the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. It was actually prompted by a specific article about some legislation that's been filed at the State House, asking that all such sanitary districts have an actual notification procedure in place. I was disappointed to see the executive director kind of going back and, and forth still about whether or not, I believe the word she used, there were sufficient regulations in place to protect downstream users, who are the people impacted by an overflow event. I think that there are quite a few people downstream that would disagree. So there's no reason we have to wait for Boston and Beacon Hill to act. So I had asked through the town manager's office if our representative, who's our DPW director, and I think he's already slipped away this evening, but I think it's, it's pretty clear, and I would imagine he disagreed, or he agrees already, that the GLSD board, I would like to see them actually put a policy in place specifically for the GLSD that says they will notify not just the downstream communities, but the actual member communities, because unfortunately, in the press, it came very much across that it was North Andover that released the sewage into the river, which of course, we are just one of several communities that make that up, and as a town, have no control. As I know the town manager, not to put words in your mouth, but it seemed that you were disappointed as well to not have heard right away. And so I'd ask the board to entertain a motion to direct our representative on the GLSD to push his members to put such a notification policy in place.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Smedili, seconded by Selectman Valancourt. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Next item on the agenda is a request from Jim Stanford, our DPW Director of Surplus Vehicles and Equipment.
Mr. Chairman, this is a fairly straightforward request, pretty common from our departments.
So we have three vehicles.
Vehicle, a chipper, and a tractor.
Yep, mower.
Chair, our motion that we accept the recommendation of the DPW Director to surplus the three pieces of equipment as detailed in the Office memorandum, dated November 8th, 2017.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt.
Do I need to list those out? No, I referenced the memo, so.
Seconded by Selectman Keen. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing surplus. Next, we have a request of Jeff Coco from the Festival Committee to use the Town Common for the Christmas tree lighting celebration on Sunday, November 26th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Hopefully, we approve it, because I already announced that we were doing it. I was so eager to get it. Well, it's all on Facebook anyway, so you're, we'll disappoint a lot of people on social media right now, that's for sure. So Jeff, thank you for, for being patient with us and waiting.
Hopefully, you'll approve it, and we're going to have our event as we have in the past few years. We resurrected a tradition that had been going on for a number of years, slipped away from us, and we brought it back. We're building it up every year. I know you've been instrumental in coming to a couple of meetings and trying to give us some guidance there, and we've implemented some of the recommendations that you have made. We're expanding as we always have, so we're trying to spread it out a little more, so we don't have as much congestion in one area. This year, we're adding in addition to the hot chocolate, the cookies, as well as the musical entertainment that we'll have there, the high school singing. We're also having photos with Santa, too, free photos with Santa. So when people come down, they can bring their little ones in Santa's lap and get a free photo with Santa. It should be a nice event. It's a nice family-oriented event, and provided the weather cooperates, we should be in good shape.
So this is the Festival Committee, it is a town event, and so this request also includes a waiving of all fees.
Move approval, and just thank you to all of you who organized this. You all work very hard so that everybody else gets to enjoy it, and you work at the night of the event, and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
So, again, move approval.
Motion made by Selectman Smedili.
I'll amend that to waive all the fees as well.
Yep.
Do, motion, amendment made by Selectman Valancourt, accepted by Selectman Smedili. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for the whole committee for organizing that.
Good to see you there.
That motion, that motion is sufficient. Okay, I'm, sorry, I'm a stickler for this. We next have a proposal from the Appointment Subcommittee for an appointment to the Cultural Council, so I will defer to.
We are recommending the appointment of Brooke Page to the Cultural Council. Had the opportunity to spend some time with Brooke. She's gone to art schools for her education, and in her current job is doing marketing and, and hosting marketing events, and very active, using social media to support marketing, which we thought would be a good addition to Cultural Council to maybe do a bit more advertising, advertisement of the great things Cultural Council is doing. So we're happy to recommend her appointment to this group.
I would just add, it just continues, we interviewed several other folks tonight, and wow, there are some really qualified and engaged and interested folks in supporting our town, and it's just great to see folks step up, you know, who are new to town, and those that have been here a long time or coming back. So please keep showing up, you know, we don't necessarily always have the openings, but as you say, our bench is getting big and deep, so it's all good.
Do I hear a motion?
Move that the board, Selectman appoint Brooke Page to the Cultural Council for the term ending June 30th, 2020.
Motion made by Selectman Nobily. Seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Brooke. And so a second request from our Appointment Subcommittee regarding the OPEB Advisory Committee.
Well, we're, we've had a lot of things on our plate here as, as a board, but this is an important piece to really be in a position to report out, hopefully by town meeting, an evaluation of the OPEB issue. And as we've been interviewing candidates, we came to a kind of a, scratching our heads a little bit here, where we had two really outstanding, a number of great candidates, but two who really matched, I think, the vision for the board. People who have experience within the town and sort of how the town operates, and then folks who have worked with this sort of issue professionally and across the state. And so in discussions with Selectman Keen, we kind of came to the recognition, maybe we really should have two citizens on this committee. And, and that sort of made sense to us, but as we looked at that, then we sort of had a, an even number. And it, in further consideration, we looked at and say, well, who are the real vested parties in, and who have the knowledge, who has the knowledge to evaluate all this? And the recognition was that some of, a lot of that also comes from the Finance Committee. So what we'd like to propose is that there be two representatives from the Finance Committee and two citizen representatives to this committee, which would allow us really to round out and split up the work among folks who have the background and kind of the depth of skills in order to get the quality evaluation, ultimately, the, the finished work piece that we'd like. So that's my request.
So would you?
Need a motion?
I was going to say, do a motion to increase the membership and composition.
Move that the Board of Selectmen increase the membership and composition on the OPEB Advisory Committee to include two members from the citizenry of North Andover and two members from the Finance Committee.
For a total of nine members, correct? Because we already have one fit common, one resident.
Right, yes, a total of nine, correct.
Motion made by Selectman Nobily. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that interest. Can I have a list before us for licensing? Do I hear a motion to move licensing? Motion made by Selectman Smedili. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Valancourt. All in favor? Aye. We're in licensing.
Okay, we're in licensing. So first on the agenda, we have a request for five one-day wine and malt licenses for Merrimack College for the following events. Theater concessions at Rogers Center of the Arts on November 16th from 6:30 to 11:30. Theater concessions at the Rogers Center for the Arts on Friday, November 17th from 6:30 to 10:30. Same theater concessions at Rogers Center on November 18th from 1:30 to 10:00 p.m. And then interdisciplinary institute reception at the Rogers Center for Performing Arts on Monday, November 20th from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. And then a groundbreaking for the New Welcome Center at Crow Hall Parking Lot A on Thursday, November 30th from 3:30 to 9:30 p.m. So those are five requests. All, all have been reviewed and approved by both the fire and police and the building respective.
Mr. Chairman, move approval, as you stated and delineated different events.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a request for a new facility, a new restaurant called the Howling Wolf in North Andover, doing business as Howling Wolf Taqueria Express, and they're requesting an all-alcohol general on-premise license and an entertainment license at 550 Turnpike Street. And we have favorable recommendations from the Fire Department. This is from the Police Department. Also, it looks favorable, yes. And then, so both from fire and, and police, favorable.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. How are you? My name is Jeremy Jones. My wife, Amy, over here. Basically, we are looking for an all-alcohol license in the new establishment over where the Zynga space was. We currently own and operate, I don't know if you've heard of the Howling Wolf in Salem, anybody?
In Salem, in Salem, Mass.
Salem, Mass. And when thinking about a liquor license, you think about the risks, I guess. What I can let you know is, we've, establishment has been going about seven or eight years now, with zero incidents in terms of liquor license violations, IDing, problems, things of that nature. We are in a college in tourist town in Salem, obviously Salem State is there. We get through October every year, and we are very aware of the risks associated with, you know, these types of things, especially in a college town, and we work really hard and take that stuff very seriously, so. Any questions, happy to take them.
First off, what type of food?
It's Mexican, so it's taqueria, so burritos, tacos, things of that nature.
What's the seating capacity going to be, Jeremy?
Seating capacity, I'm not exactly 100% sure, but it's less than, it's 40 or less. What I can't tell you with certainty is there's a clause in the lease that the seating capacity cannot be greater than 30.
And what's your, what's your schedule for opening?
For, our, our schedule to open it?
To opening, yes, I'm sorry.
Probably looking March, April at this point. We're, we're submitting, we've submitted paperwork to Health, and we'll need to wait on them to bless it, so to speak, to get the building permit.
Any other questions?
How big is your place in Salem?
The place in Salem, square footage, it's about 2,400 square feet between the bar and the floor, it's about 80 total pageings, so.
It's a little bigger.
Does this feel smaller?
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller. So this, it's, it's an interesting concept. It's a Howling Wolf Express. We also have what's called the Howling Wolf Express in Marblehead, that is all food, more of a traditional takeout place, basically. So this is actually a very interesting concept, if you're interested in the restaurant business. Fast casual with, with a full bar is not something you see every day. So I think, you know, from a standpoint of coolness factor for North Andover, I think it'd be pretty cool that we're bringing this here. It's nice from a business standpoint, you can do it in a smaller space. So, you know, I think it's, it's an interesting concept that we're, that we're, you know, looking forward to launching.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Be a great addition. People students at Merrimack will appreciate. People inside Merrimack will appreciate the addition of the food.
Yes, of course.
I think that, you know, it's gonna, I mean, you're already accustomed to having a lot of students around you because of Salem State.
Yep. And it's affordable, too, for what it's worth, so, you know, people, you come in our place and it's everybody in the world, basically, and it's a good value, a good price, so people like it.
Look forward to it. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Howling Wolf North Andover, Inc., DBA Howling Wolf Taqueria Express for an all-alcohol general on-premise license and an entertainment license at 550 Turnpike Street.
Is there a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm glad to hear that you are familiar with being in a college town, so you do have that extra burden. I'm sure you are familiar with the fact that, however, that only Massachusetts licenses, passports, military are the, really the only form of accepted ID. So if you do take one from another state, which could be highly likely, being so close to Merrimack College, you do it at your own risk and peril. We often suggest that you get...
Yeah, the technology.
Yeah, you will be looked upon a little bit more favorably if something slips through. So that, again, you seem to already know the routine.
Yes, ma'am.
So we really ask that you be very, very careful and not to over-serve, so forth. It's a busy street, a lot of pedestrians on that street now from Royal Crest walking across to Merrimack College, so we really ask you to be careful. So fear warning.
I appreciate it, thank you.
But we wish you really well.
Thank you.
Any North Andover merchants' spiel you want to give?
We have a very robust business community in this town, and certainly ones that I think are more than willing to be supportive of each other. So certainly check out the Chamber of Commerce, the North Andover Merchants Association. It's a good group of people and a good way to meet fellow business owners.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, best of luck to both of you, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for choosing North Andover, it's great.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to move out of licensing?
Motion to move out of licensing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go back to you, Mr. Chair.
Back on that. So we have before, under old business, Section 8 of the Agenda, we have our FY '19 Budget and Policy Statement. This is a draft that we already had a chance to review. I don't think any, Mr. Manager, were any changes made to this that...
Typically takes two steps, Mr. Chairman. The first is to adopt the component of the budget policy statement that are your goals. Second phase is to give all of the backup information relative to what we expect from fiscal '19, as of today, being November, so that full document, including the sum assumption of what available revenues will look like as we begin the budget process. Lynn Savage was here earlier. We'll be mailing out this week to departments their budget development packages. This document gets, is sort of the kickoff of that to indicate what's available for additional spending in fiscal '19. No vote is required.
Comprehensible.
This has been posted on the town's budget tab on their website, so it's available to the public.
I really like the degree of completeness, and I appreciate also, you know, in our working session, we talked about a number of things, and I appreciate you, you know, incorporating them in here and putting, you know, a process to address that, not just sort of throwing it in and make it look good. And I think that's important, so I recognize.
So any further discussion or comments for the Town Manager regarding this piece? Onto new business.
Moving along well.
So we have before us, the first piece under new business was a discussion regarding a special town meeting for the cannabis bylaw that we discussed at our prior meeting. And I know we have Suzanne Egan, our Town Counsel, here with us this evening to talk about some guidance that she's received from the Attorney General's Office regarding what municipalities like North Andover should be doing, and so with that.
Yes, good evening. I have recently spoken with the Attorney General's Municipal Law Department regarding the provision of marijuana establishments within a community. And she's giving certain advice that is really looking at risks and trying to limit a municipality's risks. So she's looking at this and saying that towns that want to prohibit certain marijuana establishments should do so prior to April 1st, 2018, because there is a slight risk that the Cannabis Control Commission may grant a license to a marijuana establishment in a town in spite of the fact that the town has adopted a zoning moratorium. And she's looking at it as a particular section of the law that's very particular and taking a very conservative approach to this. So what she's doing is she's providing towns advice that this is a potential risk, and in order to sort of minimize it, to cap that risk, what you can do is go to a special town meeting to put, to adopt those prohibitions against the marijuana establishments. Which is different, I know, and I want the Board to understand that we all recognized that earlier, the advice from the Attorney General's Office was to adopt a zoning moratorium, and that would protect the town from any establishments from being located in them. So it is different, but she is looking at this particular risk.
And when you say she, who is she?
So the head of the Municipal Law Department in the Attorney General's Office is Margaret Hurley, and she's the one who reviews the town's bylaws. And she's not providing any written opinion, and she's in, what she's doing is she is providing this advice in forums, and if, when people call her on the phone and ask her for that advice.
So this is only being given at forums, so it's not an official statement from the Attorney General, it's from the Municipal Law Attorney General. Is that correct? It's not coming from...
No, it's not coming, no, I have not spoken to the Attorney General. I've spoken to the head of the Municipal Law Department.
So one attorney in the Attorney General's Office is giving this advice, is refusing...
At forums.
Is refusing to put it in writing, or isn't?
Well, typically, typically, they wouldn't put something like this in writing. So what, so you have to...
But she won't put it in writing, but she says it at forums.
Yes. So if you, so you have to think about what she's doing. She's not directing towns to go to a special town meeting to adopt this, but she's saying that she's looking at reading this statute in a very, very conservative manner, and saying that in order to, the way she looks at it is in order to completely minimize or get rid of all risks that any type of marijuana establishment could locate in the town that the town wants to prohibit, the best thing to do is to hold the special town meeting and to prohibit it prior to April 1st. Because April 1st is the date on which the applications will be accepted by the Cannabis Control Commission. And it's a very, it's a fine point of law. When I read it, I look at it, and what she's looking at is a very fine point in a technical way of reading that law.
So even though we have a moratorium, you could still, they could still request a license, and even though the moratorium is in place, the license would be granted, and then it would take effect after the moratorium was over? Is that...
So I think what she's doing is she is looking at the fact that on April 1st, this is her concern, April 1st entities or establishments can apply for a license. The license won't be granted until it's July 1st, right? But what she's, her concern is, is that the Cannabis Control Commission or an establishment, a business owner, is going to say, look at what was in place on April 1st to determine whether the town had adopted a prohibition against the marijuana establishment pursuant to the new law that was passed in the fall.
May I ask, how many communities have put in the, what's the word? No, 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 no.
Moratorium.
Thank you, moratorium.
The moratorium?
It's getting late, I've been up really early.
So I don't know the exact number, but I do know that a lot of, probably the majority, adopted zoning moratoriums.
I'll tell you, it's just turning every community on its ear. We did what we were recommended to do, we did that, and now they're coming back in a non-written statement that's being said at forums, and I'm not criticizing her in her interest of protecting that, I get that, but they really should get their act together. And not to put it in a written statement is really troubling.
Just for the public, just because we have a tendency to use the same words and they're not always, this is commercial, non-medical, right?
Right.
And it's not about the zoning bylaw. It's a recommendation about the general bylaw that's only required if you limit or prohibit a form of commercial marijuana.
Yes, that's a good point.
So the Board was, it was recommended to the Board by us getting advice, again, from the state, that if you are interested in limiting or banning certain forms of commercial, you should vote to do that and prepare for a bylaw, and then further inform, not just at forums, but in a direct conversation with the office that you've had, and with other towns who have had their conversation, but not in the form of a legal opinion, someone's name at the bottom, that now in addition to communicating that you're interested in banning or limiting commercial marijuana, in this case, this Board, however, voted, that they're also suggesting that the general bylaw associated with that decision be adopted prior to April 1st.
Right, there is a very big distinction between the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw prohibiting. So...
Well, last meeting, we discussed the prohibition. We recommended a prohibition on two of the five categories, so that's what we, if we were to take this up at a special town meeting, those are the two that we would be, have on the moratorium for prohibition for the retail sales and the craft cultivation, which is what we, which we voted for last meeting.
Right.
That's what would be the topic of this special town meeting.
Right, correct, yep.
And if we did not have a special town meeting to vote on that, and a company got a license from the state for recreational commercial use, you're saying there is some risk that they could put a retail dispensary in North Andover, even though we have a moratorium and we have no zoning for it? They could somehow do that?
I'm saying that the Attorney General is, views that there is potentially a risk that that could happen through either the, through either the cannabis, the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission viewing a zoning moratorium as not a prohibition, or an applicant who would come to North Andover, or come to the CCC, put in an application to locate here, and then when it's denied because of the prohibition, the zoning moratorium, appeal that through the court system. And I think the point that she's looking at is that we just don't know, without regulations, this is a new law, without knowing what the Cannabis Control Commission will do, we just don't know what will happen, and there's that potential that it could be appealed through the court system, and they could look at it like that. And that's sort of, that's her position on this, and that's what she has advised.
One of the arguments against moving that quickly with the bylaw before the regulations come out is that they might conflict, or might not fully address what the regulations are that the CCC produces. The CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission is supposed to produce the regulations by April 1st, is that...
March 15th.
March 15th, excuse me.
March 15th, so the draft, so in the...
But then they can apply by April 1st.
Right, right.
But for when those, does that allow us a quick enough turnaround time to put, let's say hypothetically entertain a scenario where we did approve bylaws recommended by this Board at a special town meeting, and then the Cannabis Control Commission produced regulations that somehow conflict or don't jive with what we agreed to at that town meeting? Do we have enough turnaround time to place an amendment or adjustments on our regularly scheduled town meeting?
So what we're discussing right now is that what would be at the special town meeting would be a straight prohibition, or recommendation, is if you're going to do a straight prohibition on specific types of marijuana establishments, put that at a special town meeting and vote to prohibit. The cannabis, I haven't heard any concern that the Cannabis Control Commission is going to do anything about that particular issue, that their regulations are going to in some way conflict in the, on the town's ability to prohibit particular types. It's more that the regulations may, with her concern that she expressed was that the regulations may be more lenient, and if a town doesn't have that direct prohibition pursuant to the statute, then they'll find a way to allow a license to be granted in a town without that direct prohibition.
If we were to have a special town meeting with the prohibition, there's nothing to prevent additional warrant articles being on that special town meeting warrant, correct?
You control the warrant, outside of citizen petitions, you control the warrant.
Outside of citizen petitions?
Outside of citizen petitions, you control the warrant.
So citizens could petition and put something else, so, to Selectman DeKalb...
So to petition.
There could, well, the planning, well, the planning board zoning bylaw. I mean, if that were, if that were on the special town meeting, then there could be a situation you mentioned where there was some...
So my, that's my fault if I'm not clear. So one of the arguments that has been used against entertaining our bylaw, we're coming up with a bylaw right now without having...
Are you talking about the zoning bylaw?
The, no.
Oh, the general bylaw?
The general bylaw.
Okay.
Was crafted at a time where we don't actually know what the state regulations are, because the state regulations have not yet come out. And so the rationale that some opponents have used is wait until after those regulations come out before producing a bylaw. My question is, do we have enough time to respond and adjust our general bylaw? This isn't about additional articles, but do we have time to adjust, again hypothetically, we have a special town meeting, we approved the general bylaw as this Board presented it, the Cannabis Control Commission then several weeks later produces regulations that may conflict or, again, not, may conflict with what we approved. Do we have enough turnaround time to then produce amendments or change that general bylaw at our generally scheduled town meeting so that they are consistent with what the state has produced?
I'm not sure, it's not really a legal question, I guess.
You would.
But that's why I'm asking, will we have it? So if they're produced at March 15th, is that, I just don't know the town meeting timeline. Can we, will we have enough time to conceivably turn around?
Because it's not a legal question, it's a practical question of when the warrant's going to be done. You control the warrant. That, based on the budget calendar, we've already adopted, that warrant will be produced in the third week in April. Asking us, can you, can the Board have time, would the Board have time to add a warrant article between when the regulation's issued on March 15th and when the warrant's produced and be delivered under the charter? Yeah, sure.
Okay.
The question being raised is the gap between April 1st and the special town meeting date. That's really the question at hand, is...
Well, no, the question at hand was my question, I just, clearly it was misunderstood, so I just wanted to make sure that it was understood, because again, what I'm hearing is we don't need to have a special town meeting, we can have all this happen at a regular town meeting. Why would we rush into a special town meeting? But what I'm trying to say is that any, any adjustments that may need to be made, once the Commission produces regulations, we still have time to add on our regular town meeting if adjustments needed to be made.
I'm raising something different, so I answered the question, but then I should have put a piece of, some punctuation there, right? The question, the question being raised, or the challenge or the concern being addressed is the gap period from April 1st to the special town meeting date, and the risk associated with that gap, not having a moratorium in place between when the regulations are issued or, in essence, when the license could be issued, and when town meeting is held.
Right, so I think it's the gap between the April 1st deadline and the annual town meeting.
That's what I'm saying. Did I say that wrong? I'm sorry.
Yes. Right, that's the gap.
That's the period of risk.
Yes.
So it's the gap from April 1st, which is about a month and a half until the annual town meeting. So what they're suggesting is get in front of that, get in front of the April 1st.
Yes.
And so then you're saying, you're asking, if the regulations come out March 15th,
I'm just saying, so it's a separate issue, so one of the arguments is that, you know, no matter what, Cannabis Control Commission, it's a five-member board, they'd never approve a license for a community that has a moratorium. My question is, though, that, and it's been answered, we have enough time to respond and adjust if, if we adopt bylaws that end up down the road, regardless of the moratorium proved to be inconsistent with what the Cannabis Control Commission produces. So it's not, the point being, it's not necessarily possible to rush into this because we can always correct any potential errors or inconsistencies at that May town meeting.
The distribution of the town meeting warrant happens under the charter by April 20th, 2018.
So we have...
It takes us about three days to print the warrant. Don't tell anybody this, because we like to give ourselves more time, but if we're really pushed into a compressed schedule, if we had information on any warrant article and the Board called a special town meeting and added an article, amended an article by the 15th or 16th of April, we could get into the warrant and distribute it in time to satisfy the charter.
If we're looking at the risk of that gap of April to... If we're looking at the risk of that gap of April to town meeting, aren't we somewhat in control of that risk by our issuance of a letter of non-opposition or not?
Yeah, you would presume so, right. That's what, that's what everybody has assumed. And so, the Attorney General office is saying that there is a potential risk, that that would not protect the town. So it's, it's a very...
But they can't issue a license unless, to someone, unless they have a letter of non-opposition, correct?
So, so we're talking about the commercial, you're talking, we're talking about, that's for medical marijuana, so right now we're talking about the commercial.
So we don't even know if a letter of non-opposition's required. We're assuming it will be, but...
We don't have the timing, we don't have those regulations, we don't have the application process. That's the problem. And so that's where she's seeing the risk. It's, it is an incredibly conservative approach, and I think part of the reason why she's taking that approach is because she's been, she advised most of the towns to adopt a zoning moratorium, and that would be, you know, that would protect the towns. And now, because the law has changed, she's seen going the next step and being even more conservative on it.
There have been some towns that have already taken that step, right? I think I've heard Westwood, Trailworth, there were just a few off the top of my head, but there were some that have already gone to that special town meeting and passed these prohibitions to be even more conservative, right? Because they don't even do it before, you know, before 2018 even.
Right.
Just from a timeline perspective, this was brought up at the last meeting. The legislation didn't pass till late July. So the concept of the, the sort of rights of towns, whether or not you passed it at a more, at the ballot question or not, and how towns who did would respond versus towns that didn't, that wasn't defined by the statute until it was signed by the governor in late July. There are towns that have standing town meetings in the fall, and there are some towns that have standing town meetings only once a year. And so some of those towns, if they have a standing annual, semi-annual town meeting, would have brought the question before the town meeting. The last number I saw around moratoriums at no votes was 87. It wasn't quite as high as I thought it was going to be in terms of moratoriums that exist throughout the Commonwealth. Eighty-seven. Eighty-seven, it's from moratorium.
Oh.
From a, from a risk standpoint, then practically what we're talking about is, is there somebody who is savvy enough, has the connections, has the money, has the vision, who would apply for a license in that seven-week period, who thinks that they would be able to either meet the guidelines or convince this community that they're the right choice? Is that really what we're talking about here?
Or what we're talking about is somebody who is all of that, but doesn't feel that they need to convince the community, but then will go and file a lawsuit and litigate the issue to get the license even though there is a moratorium. So that's why the risk, that's why it's such a conservative approach. Because if the community were going to be in favor of it, then you wouldn't need that prohibition, right? And if the CCC looks at it and says, the town has a zoning moratorium, it doesn't meet the requirements as the law as we look at it now, then you wouldn't do, then there wouldn't be that risk. So it's really, you know, it's really looking at, we're absolute worst-case scenario.
Okay.
Everything falls apart, and there's somebody legates it, and then, and they win. So that's sort of like, that's the worst-case scenario.
So there's a small risk, but there is a risk.
From her perspective, yes.
Are there risks or drawbacks to tackling this issue sooner that we just haven't discussed? I mean, I know that we've had quite a few open meetings about this. I mean, if we address this issue sooner, the general bylaw at a special town meeting, or for communities that have addressed this bylaw at special town meetings already, what are drawbacks for them? Are there any? I mean, other than just the expense of having the town meeting? Is it...
Legally, no, I don't think there are any drawbacks. And so when I did raise that issue with her, she, her sort of response was, it's just the cost and expense of holding the town meeting, the special town meeting.
So literally, if we were a city council, we could just make this vote right now and just protect it? It's all an issue of, you know, the cumbersome nature of, of being a town government and having town meeting? Any additional questions?
So does this decision need to be made tonight?
Obviously not.
It wasn't on his vote, it was on his...
It was really meant to be just a discussion, okay. Sometimes things have a way of moving along.
It may be helpful information that we're expecting, I believe expecting a draft of the CCC's regulations as early as December.
So still gives us enough time.
Right.
I mean, it could change dramatically, but I think we're going to see pen to paper at least initially in December.
And that may be helpful to guide. And then we can always go back to the Attorney General's office and see if, you know, if that informs her decision to, either feels like the risk is eliminated or, or not.
If a special town meeting were to be called, do you foresee any other items being put on there? Is the planning board getting close to a decision, and all of a sudden now we've got the whole...
As the board knows, I've communicated with the planning board that they need to hold to the process that they have historically held through deliberations like this. They're meeting again next week.
Next Tuesday.
And then they will need, at least, you know, I'm not reporting for the planning board, but they will need to go into their December schedules to continue the conversation. We certainly have been having this conversation since August. We continue to support that they should hold the public hearing process that historically held, which is that they hold three public hearings, you know, timeline puts them in... I was originally saying late January, early February, I'd say the soonest would be early February based upon their current conversations. But I continue to support the fact that the planning board should hold to the process that historically has helped do for other zoning articles.
Well, I don't disagree. They should certainly not be rushed, nor should they rush public hearings over the holidays.
For simplicity, yeah.
Yeah, which really would be unfair.
For simplicity, I agree.
Yeah.
But that's, this is all, only about the general bylaw?
This is only about the general bylaw, it's not about the zoning bylaw at all.
So to the best of your knowledge, you don't foresee something else being put on if we were to have a special town meeting? Anything could happen.
My experience, my experience is that every time you open a special town meeting warrant, there's a, there's a rush to place things on. Would I prefer that there not be something else? Like generally, that's why I generally don't support special town meetings, because they end up with a lot of things on them that we otherwise could have prepared, bought through the normal process. But that's a broader statement than my experience is that people find a way to want to add things on any number of topics.
I guess we need to think about all of this.
Basically, our next steps, Suzanne, for the discussion, I'm kind of kicking around a little bit, and now we contemplate on it? Is that what I'm...
Well, what is, what is the timeline?
With the town manager sort of outline.
But that, but that was in reference to the planning board. But this is just...
No, 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 he also talked about...
You, you said that the earliest we could have it, but I, what would be the timeline of the board? Next meeting, we vote on a special town meeting, or a month from now, we vote on a special town meeting, because at that point we'll have regs from the draft regs.
No, it's 45 days for the citizen, it's 14.
Back us into when such a meeting could take place if we voted at our, our next meeting, which is December 4th, or we voted two meetings from now after draft regulations are produced by the Cannabis Control Commission?
14 days under the charter.
But it would really be unfortunate to hold a special town meeting right in the middle of the holiday season.
It's not a long time. A citizen requires specials 45 days. A special town meeting under our governance is 14 days, unless it's an annual town meeting, then it's 21 days.
Okay.
Right, it's...
And let's say that at this special town meeting, that there was the prohibition passed, what amount of time would it take for the state to review that and make, you know, approve that? Or do they even need to do that?
Well, they, they approve all of the bylaws, but it would, it goes into effect on the day it's passed.
It goes into effect on the day it's passed, okay.
So, to keep in mind is that the, sort of the date that we would be looking at is the April 1st, right? The date that people can, where the applications can be filed. And so any time up until that date is, is open. So there's no rush, there's no reason to hold it any, you know, right away as opposed to April, right before April 1st. I mean legally, is all I'm talking about. I mean, maybe practically, there may be a number of other reasons. But you also, then you would have, the further out you go for your special town meeting, the more information you'll have with regard to the CCC's regulations.
The concerns as relates to the timing of town meetings seem, they're far less legal and far more practical and justical, and closer you get to April 1st, you're getting close to an annual, you know, what's the level of interest? People worry about level of interest on holiday, talk about a special town meeting taking place six weeks before the end, and you've got the holiday discussion if the special town meeting is closer. Those kinds of conversations are less about our ability to put on a town meeting, and more about all, just all those other things. Will there be other things on the agenda? You know, stuff that boards of selection are made to discuss and ultimately decide on.
Any additional discussion, or, and again, this was just a kickoff, just like when, with the whole bylaw discussion actually several weeks ago. So, slow and steady. Any additional questions for Suzanne? Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have the Brook Street closure. This has been an issue my entire time on the board this last, and I'd say where this particular roadway has been closed off.
It's going on for quite a while.
This took a lot, this took centuries of research, if I'm not mistaken, right? The town manager, going all the way back to 18, actually going back to before the towns divided, correct?
1850. It's an Andover, it's an Andover decision, that's what it is. So if I, if I can provide...
Let's send it over to Andover, let them solve it.
I thought about it, I thought about it. So if I can give you some background, certainly has existed, I've been here six years, it's existed for a lot longer than that, by decades. So the complication is, and I'm really, what I'm throwing out to the board is both a little bit of history for the folks who haven't been around and looking for some direction, because it's a, it's one of those situations that we're struggling with trying to come to a conclusion. So Brook Street is, is off of Route 114. Some of you would be familiar with it, some would not. It's not far from Boston Road. It is on the right if you're heading north, say, in the direction of 495. We believe through some, through a substantial amount of research, it was accepted as a public way by the town of Andover in 1850, before we became the town of North Andover, and has operated largely as a public way since then in various forms. The complication is simple, it's, it's a topographical problem. You have a street that starts at this elevation, ends sort of at this elevation, and the middle is a giant bowl. And given the fact that it sits in the middle of wetlands, and you can imagine the wetland rules that have changed over the years, and the fact that wetlands have generally grown over the years, we have a circumstance where the road is frequently, I wouldn't say more often than not, but certainly frequently flooded. And doing some research and some engineering in that area, so at various times, we're multiple DPW directors and I think multiple town managers have blocked the road when we've been worried about it as a public safety risk, that someone drives down there, it's dark, someone drives down there at night and ends up in the wetland where it's a concern about. So we at times have blocked the roadway from passage to eliminate or avoid the public risk. I've spoken of residents who use it largely as a cut through. There are no residential homes on the direct stretch of the street we're talking about. And we know that it's used certainly as a convenience and a cut through for folks who live on the other side of Brook Street. There are times, though, when we block off the street that someone is moving our barriers, even when they're very large Jersey barriers, and reopening the street without us doing it.
Someone with some heavy equipment.
Someone with some heavy equipment. And so, it's providing a challenge for us. So what I asked Jim Stenfey to do, who's newer here, but certainly saw the problem early on, is to look at the roadway and find out what the permanent improvements would look like, and what the sort of interim improvements would look like, and come back and, and along with Suzanne, produce the history. So anyway, so we came back and looked at the street. It would cost, it's currently a culvert, basically a drainage device, a water flow device, it sits onto the roadway. To replace that culvert would be $400,000. The issue is not just that it's $400,000, which is about one-third of our roadway repave, repavement plan for one year, is that it wouldn't necessarily mitigate all of the water problems. Because the culvert would allow water to flow through it better, it would protect the sides of the roads, where our greatest concern are for both pedestrians and roadway traffic. But because it's topographically in a bowl, it doesn't change the fact that there are times during the season that water would rise and go over the roadway. And there's some pictures included here, we have certainly additional pictures. And therefore, in order to go beyond the culvert and to do what was, would be necessary to sort of permanently eliminate the risk, in essence, would have to create a road that looks a little bit like a bridge with asphalt. You'd have to come down, would have to elevate the road eight to 10 feet with asphalt, come over the water risk, come down on the other side. And some of the limitations to that beyond cost, which is likely to be hundreds of thousands of dollars, is that we're not sure without starting down a process into an engineering that the Conservation Commission would be particularly enamored with us doing those kinds of changes in a wetland. So, we're stuck a little bit. We recognize the convenience to the neighborhood, we've tried to work and leave the roadway open other than when it floods. If we could control the roadway, literally block it when it's a risk and open it when it's not, I certainly would feel a lot better, but we're not in full control of that. The equipment we put in place, Jersey barriers, which can weigh several thousand pounds, are sometimes moved. And so, we've put some barriers along the sides to make sure people are aware of the size of the roadway to reduce risk. So, we're a little bit at a challenging spot. Can't say to you that I would recommend through a capital plan that we're going to spend $400,000 for the culvert and then hundreds of thousands of dollars on a roadway repair to one roadway with no homes on it. But at the same time, I recognize its convenience in terms of accessing a particular neighborhood. So that's the challenge we found ourselves in. So I'm looking for some feedback and some direction. Ultimately, I have to make a decision on those, on those items, but at, but at this point, the challenge is both cost benefit and safety.
It is a complicated problem.
It's a complicated problem.
Yeah, I mean, for as, as long as I, I remember growing up, I used to use that road all the time, but for as long as I can remember, now it's been closed. I don't, I haven't used it probably in 25 years that I can remember going up or down that road because it's always closed. So I have to imagine people have gotten used to not using that road, that little, and it is only a small section of roadway that connects 114 to that back, that back street.
But there's whole neighborhoods back there, and they, I...
I know that.
Yeah, we, yeah, I'm sure you do.
But the road's been closed for a number of years.
But the neighbors say it adds quite a bit to go around. I'm just stating what, I'm sure you've heard it, I've heard it.
That is only, though, if they're coming from the Middleton direction. If they're going food shopping, I mean, even if they're at Stop &amp; Shop, they wouldn't use that road. I mean, it would only be if they were coming from south of North Andover. Otherwise, that's, it's not like that's a cut through in general, and that we're making them take a more complicated route all the time. It would only be for those folks who are coming from the south, because you would just loop right across Chestnut Street if you were leaving Stop &amp; Shop or anything farther, farther north on Route 114, which is most of 114 frankly.
And we, we don't, we don't know what hap, so, so since town meeting accepted it, 1850, the only way you reverse that action is town meeting would have to accept, basically turning it back, on accepting it. Except, quite frankly, I've been in this business for a long time, I've never done that, but on accepting it. It wouldn't necessarily mean the road wouldn't remain in play, it just no longer would be us, right? It would no longer be, you know, us blocking the road. Quite frankly, and I, we do try to block it off, and there are signs up there, but if you'll, if you'll notice, the signs that are light are moved very quickly, the signs that are a little heavier may take a couple of days. I mean, whole Jersey barriers have been shifted off that roadway to allow access. And so, we, we could take some interim steps and put, you know...
I mean, they're blocked up for, for safety reasons. I mean, that's why, I assume that's why we're putting Jersey barriers, that we don't just put them wherever we feel like it, just because we want to put them up. I mean, there's a real safety issue here that you've presented, and like you said, it's a town meeting decision anyways. I suppose town meeting would have a real healthy discussion about whether or not that's the best use of $400,000 of our very limited infrastructure budget.
I mean, do we have an estimate on how, how long it's been closed over the last, I mean, I, I haven't seen it open in a long, long time. Maybe I'm just, I'm not there every day, so I don't know. But, I mean, is it open periodically? And it is, I never...
I would say it's open more often than not.
Yeah, I would.
I think sometimes the difference is, we'll put signs up, and you'll, it'll appear as if it's closed, but people are still using it to get around the more portable signs. But in a conversation I had with several of the neighbors, I said, okay, we'll try to be more thoughtful than just closing it all the time, we'll try to look at the water[1793.73] We'll try to look at the water table and move it. We did that a little bit, but when, the real challenge is we're not in control of the space. When we're choosing that it's a safety problem, we're putting, you know, jersey barriers in a road and those jersey barriers are being moved. I can't agree to keep, keep on committing resources to move them back and doing this sort of back and forth process. So I would say that it's open more often than not. It's wet right now, but people have still been passing. I saw Philly low to the ground sports, God go through a pretty good puddle there the other day. If it was us, would be, it'd be closed right now. But again, we're not in full control of our ability to manage that. And we don't want to, we may be able to close it better closer to where the water crests the roadway, but I don't want folks traveling down, you know, a tenth of a mile to get to those obstructions and then on that street, you're not going to be able to do a three-point turn and come back. So the challenge is not just the infrastructure work. It's the ability that we can't control the roadway when we need to. Because if we could, I would just continue with that. We'd commit the necessary resource and do it. It's the fact that we're not, we don't own that complete control. That's the challenge right now.
So what's the long-term recommendation to bring it to town meeting to just accept it or unaccept it?
And I, I think the roadway would probably continue to remain. I can't imagine that if you did that, it would revert back to the property owner. One property owner owns the entire stretch of the abutting property. My guess is that it probably would remain open. Would remove the street name off the top and indicate it's a non-public way. I don't imagine that the property owner would close it because I think, I'm not, I'll leave it at that. I don't think the property owner would close it as a public way.
Who would the property owner be responsible for plowing it, maintaining it, everything else, right?
It's private property. It's private property. It was originally, not originally, sometime, after 1850 and before today, it was designed as a subdivision. And the intention was that although there would be, if you look at the plans, there was a plan to make that into a subdivision. So the roadway made sense in that context. So outside of the normal connection and outside of the 1850, whatever was discussed in 1850, as a subdivision, it makes sense. If someone develops it, they improve the roadway, they commit several million dollars to the infrastructure because they need to to make the property values worth it. With the expansion of the conservation and the wetlands there, that's not going to be a subdivision. So even though those spaces, that farmland is subdivided, it's not, it doesn't seem to me that you'd ever see a completed subdivision there. This, the infrastructure work, it'd be down to a hint or one or two parcels because there'd be so many wetlands dealing with, you know, addressing.
So this is a, there's no vote on the agenda this evening? It's just a general piece of information or are you looking for any informal guidance from us as a board or?
Any feedback from you folks, anybody here, anybody who's at home or here's? I, you know, we're, I think we attempt to be creative whenever possible. It is a highly unusual circumstance that we would be suggesting that a public roadway be reverted back. But we're also concerned about the well-being of the people who live here and our ability to maintain a roadway in the long term. So if folks have feedback, they can be helpful toward the conversation. But absence of any, anything that would fundamentally change that, I'm likely to place an open meeting warrant ultimately for your approval and town meeting's approval, reverting that roadway back to private property.
Does this require a two-thirds vote or just a simple majority?
It's probably two-thirds, it's land. I'd have to look at that, but might, that'd be my reaction. Haven't done one before and never have opened to that again, but.
Okay.
Any options if we've done other subdivisions, excuse me, I have been up very late last night doing REIT stuff and early this morning. Of some sort of a retaining pond, that it's some sort of relationship with the abutting property owners? Or there's no storm drains down there and we don't have anything that would just pour right back into the system?
If you drive down there, the size of the wetland.
No, I know it's, I know it goes like this.
But it goes, it goes back, actually, the wetlands goes back up Johnson Street. If you drive along Johnson and look to the right, that wetland is.
Oh, that's unbelievable, yeah.
Right, so.
That was, that was, that's recent.
That's more recent, correct.
Yeah, recent like 10 years or something or more.
So I don't think there's a drainage solution that still wouldn't be, you'd need a pump station to move the water back upstream, topographically back to a place where it could be, I still think here, it could be in seven figures when you dawn down there.
Okay.
So if you get a chance to drive by, try to avoid the do not enter signs and other barriers and let me know any feedback you may have.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion on this topic?
Is there anyone here to talk to it?
They can.
Well, I mean, this is just a general discussion that we're, we're having to speak about it. Is there anybody here to speak about Brook Street? No, it would be a town meeting discussion anyways either way.
But if the public has any feedback, certainly put it through a reporter and I'll incorporate it.
And we would have the same thing when we ended up discussing the warrant. There'd be, there'll be ample opportunity for the public to weigh in on whether or not that street should discontinue being, or should no longer continue being part of our town. Yeah, so, so the final piece under new business is a process for waiving permit fees and this was at, this was at the request of Selectman Keen. So I will let Selectman Keen speak more to it.
Yes, I just wanted to understand, I was talking to some of the people associated with NASA, North Andover Soccer Association about the permit fees that they paid to have tents up during the Columbus Day Tournament. And they had gotten some indication that the fees could possibly be waived. And I'm, I being new to the board, would like to understand, I guess, how, how they go about that. Do they just come to us and ask to get on our agenda like, like these guys? I learned it, I guess, by the, by the, but the festival committee, I think, is different because it's us. It's the town wanting to do something. This is a, while it's town soccer, it's still, I guess, a nonprofit or something, it's not, it's not.
But they do contribute quite a bit to fields and so forth.
Yes, they do, exactly.
They are very generous, but.
I mean, I, I would have been all for waiving their, their fee. I mean, this is obviously back in October.
I think they just need to.
I'd like to understand the process.
Plan it out in advance when they know they're going to be assessed those fees, they want to get on an agenda in advance of that and just come in and ask to have the fees waived for the, for the erection of the tents.
I think, I think for a lot of, a lot of groups, they don't necessarily know and that seemed to be the, the feedback coming from NASA this year just because of some changes and perhaps leadership was applying, that they didn't know that that was even an option. And so I think that was the impetus.
They'd have had the request.
Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, I, I wanted to go back and look at the records and I just didn't have time because there's so much other things on the agenda that I needed to look into for tonight. Like in years past, maybe those of you who've been on the board before, did we waive those fees in the past?
No, but I was just asking the town manager, what's, what is the fee?
It was like $30 per tent, but they had multiple tents.
I say pass the hat.
Yeah, I know, it's a, you know, I think it stacks up when you have more than one because there's multiple fields and each field had a tent and, okay. Once it gets closer to 100, then maybe it's more interesting. Although, having paid to play in that soccer tournament, I know that we're.
Is, is some of this though, I'm wondering if there also might be some confusion because those are school fields, some of those, right? So the schools have a policy for what they charge for maintenance and so forth. So I'm wondering whether or not there's a little bit of confusion around that too. Because.
Because this was a case of this a tent request, that you tents have to be permitted because we need to check on their fire rating and constructibility in terms of assembly. Certain tents of a certain size have a requirement for permits, certain do not. So this was a building permit fee through the building department in the form of a tent fee. You as the permit setting authority are also the permit waiving authority? Get both? But typically that's done proactively through a request of the board as it was tonight. And we're subject to our own fee. So if we're building, reconstructing town hall, Ray will often come and say, can you waive the fees for reconstructing town hall? So whether it's a nonprofit and nonprofits can meet different standards or whether it's a government agency, you're the permit setting authority and therefore you're the permit waiving authority. It's just traditionally done proactively. They seem to know, generally, they seem to know when asked.
Got a smaller tent or.
Small tent.
Okay, thank you. I just, I could have asked that outside of the meeting, but I think the public might have interest in that information, so.
Public comment? So there was quite a sizable number of the, members of the public. I don't know if that's because they anticipated a really exciting town manager's report or if that's.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Or if that's because anybody wanted to just weigh in in general. We had a pretty diverse discussion this evening as far as the issues we tackled. So if there's anybody here who'd like to speak?
Motion to adjourn.
If I can make just one comment on the town manager, once you're clear with that, I promise to be quick and then I do not want to step in front of that motion.
I knew you didn't. Go ahead.
Although Garrett did not want a citation or other fanfare, Garrett Bowles has announced his retirement effective December 8th. So tonight was his last appearance in his, as you can hear, Garrett is a remarkably thorough, detailed human being and has been our assessor for just over 30 years. And he'll be, has announced his retirement and that'll be December 8th. But he wanted, wanted to make sure we did not make a big deal about it. So we let him clear the room before informing folks.
Thank you. He won't let us make a big deal about it. And I said, see you next year.
I know, I just, he didn't, maybe he'll be back anyway.
Just for the fun, just for the fun of it.
At our holiday breakfast, he's got to be gone before then.
So any other questions for us with the manager? Nope. But here.
I'll say it again, move adjourned.
Should may be Selectman Smedili?
Second.
Second by Selectman Nobily, all in favor? Aye. Here adjourned.